Okay, we have it. We're good to go, right? Okay, welcome to our open session meeting of November 18th. A little 6:08, a little late. Vice Chancellor Mitch Bailey, would you do a roll call, please? Oh, yeah, roll call, please?
Certainly. President Schwartz?
I'm here.
Vice President Nearest?
Here.
Trustee Goodman?
Here.
Trustee Halliburton?
Here.
Trustee Mandelker?
Here.
Student trustee Jeanette?
Yeah.
Madam President, also in attendance are Chancellor Claire, Kenyatta College President Moore, Skyline College President Marino, College of San Mateo interim President Lopez, Chief Financial Officer Slater, and District Academic Senate President Wallace.
Thank you very much. And now we will have our pledge of allegiance and Mitch Bailey will put our flag up. Thank you very much. If you'll follow along with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to start off the meeting on kind of a sad note that the staff has requested, and I totally agree, that we will please adjourn this meeting in the memory of our former Kenyatta College President and former trustee Tom Moore, who passed away on November 4th. Thank you. There were, there's nothing to announce from closed session, so we're down to the order of the agenda. And does any board member want to make any edits or corrections, switching around of the agenda? To find you all on my screen, so I know who you are. Hearing none, we will go forward. And we're at honors, awards, and recognitions, and Chancellor Claire is going to highlight these honors, awards, and recognitions. Chancellor Claire?
Thank you so much, President Schwartz, and good evening, members of the board and those in attendance. Tonight, we have a few special guests joining us to make some remarks of congratulations and thanks. I'd first like to welcome and call upon Assembly Member Kevin Mullen, Speaker Pro Tem of the California State Assembly. Assembly Member Mullen? And I think we're going to get him in as the panelist.
There he is.
Hi, everyone.
And there he went.
My stuff a little disorienting, but I think I'm on there somewhere.
There you are. I see you.
Wonderful. Great to see all of you. And let me start my video, so you can actually see that this is actually me here. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, board members, and Chancellor Claire, congratulations to you, Chancellor. I haven't had an opportunity to congratulate you in person on becoming the Chancellor of the system and sincere congratulations as well to newly elected trustees John Pimentel and Lisa Patritis, and newly re-elected trustee, more importantly, my neighbor Maurice Goodman. Great to see you. Maurice, congratulations to you as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity to just say a couple of words. I know you have a long night in front of you. I'll be very brief, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge trustee Karen Schwartz. Thank you for the opportunity to acknowledge her and her total dedication to the well-being of the students of this district and the students of this county, really. Karen, I'm gonna make us both feel old, but her elected leadership in the education community in this county began when I was a senior in high school. First, with the County Board of Education, and then for the last 25 years as a Community College Board trustee member. You are the dean of elected education leaders in our county. Your passion first and foremost has always been the interest of the students of this county, and you will be remembered forever, Karen. And my father, who's known you for that whole duration, sends his good wishes to you as well. And thank you so much for your tremendous leadership. And then to my friend Dave Mandelker, who I first met in 1996 and whose leadership has spanned decades now, who, along with his tenured colleagues, oversaw the tremendous expansion of educational opportunities at our community colleges, which I'll often proudly refer to at the Capitol as the crown jewels of the community college system in our state. I'm only a little bit biased on that one, but you and your colleagues have weathered fiscal storms over the years and have positioned this system in an ideal place with the recognition that the system will be more important in the coming years than ever before. You should be justly proud, Dave, of your leadership and the current student base and that of generations to come will be the beneficiaries of your leadership and that of Karen as well. So with that said, it gives me great pleasure to present each of you with a parting gift. I don't have it here. Hopefully, somebody has it there. Wonderful. So on behalf of myself, my colleague, Assembly Member Berman, from the southern part of the county, as well as our retiring Senator Hill, we have a framed resolution in recognition of your service, Karen. And Dave, due to COVID, placed restrictions from the Assembly. We were not able to order a resolution befitting this occasion for you, but I can promise you that it is in the works, and we will be getting that to you that properly recognizes your tremendous leadership over the years. So in the meantime, Dave, accept our certificate of recognition until such time that we can present you with the proper framed resolution. So with that, I'll let you all get to the business of the evening. But just please know how proud I am of the work that you all do. And you give me a great story to tell at the Capitol, the great work that's done here in this county. And I'm just struck by how important all of your jobs are going to be going forward as we rebuild this economy and create ladders of economic opportunity for our many students here. So with that, I bid you adieu, and Karen and Dave, we are grateful on behalf of this county. We're grateful for your service, and thank you all very much, and hope you have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Kevin. And my resolution was delivered to me today, and it is absolutely not only beautiful, but you really captured my whole elected career here, which it's amazing. So I thank you so much for that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much, Assembly Member Mullen. And as you know, Assembly Member Mullen, I think I can't speak for the board. They can speak for themselves, but I can tell you from a perspective of those of us that work at the district and college, you have just been such a great supporter. And we really appreciate the partnership with you and those that you work with in your office. So thank you for being with us tonight. Really appreciate your time. Next.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome and call upon Supervisor Dave Pine from the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors.
It needs to be unmuted. I don't know if that helps.
Brian, can we unmute Supervisor Pine, do you think?
Yes.
How we do?
Oh, we don't have him.
I think Mitch did it as well. Sorry.
Great. One more time, Brian.
Okay. All right, I'm Can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome, Dave.
Wonderful. Well, I'm delighted to be here tonight to take the opportunity to thank Karen Schwartz and Dave Mandelker for their long and distinguished service to the Community College District and to our county. Now, I was looking over your respective bios, and when you add up the, you kind of combine them, you end up with 10 terms of service, which equals 40 years of service on the board and eight presidencies. So the two of you have put in a tremendous amount of time and effort in serving the district. And as a former, you know, school board member myself, you know, I always like to emphasize how important governing boards are to educational institutions. We've all seen good boards, and we've seen not as good boards, and College District has been fortunate to have a very strong board, and the two of you have just contributed so much. It's, you know, it's hard to, it's amazing how much has happened in the Community College District during your tenure. And of course, the campus renovation, you know, the state-leading housing innovation that was pioneered, the Promise Scholars, I mean, of course, the list is so long. But I hope you are proud when you look back over your service and appreciate your contributions to these significant accomplishments. And also, you just remind us that public service matters. I mean, this type of work is usually done in the background. It's a lot of meetings, a lot of late nights, a lot of, a lot of work where the people don't see you doing. Not a lot of, you know, recognition necessarily, but you do it because you care about the public, and we're really grateful that you, you know, for that. And then you've just left this great foundation, and as we welcome John Pimentel and our other new trustee, they are able to, you know, begin their tenure where the district's in a very, very, very strong place. So Karen, I will always enjoy talking to you about Ragazzi's Boys Choir, and I and I enjoyed serving with you in the County School Boards Association. And Dave, I actually distinctly remember you and I were elected for the first time to school boards in 2003, and we went to the new school board training that December, 16 years ago. And Dave, I have such great respect for your intellect, the way you look at issues, the way you conduct yourself, and I so appreciate our friendship. So on behalf of the board, we will have resolutions delivered to you, and we're extraordinarily grateful for your service.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much, Dave. Appreciate you being here and look forward to seeing you in the future. And for us, a choir ensemble or something.
All right. Look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Pine. And that concludes our special guest, and so we're ready to move on to the next portion of the agenda, President Schwartz.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. That was very nice. So we're moving now to statements from executives and student representatives. Chancellor Claire, you're on again.
And here I am again. Well, first of all, I want to congratulate trustee Goodman on your reelection. Maurice, congratulations to you and looking forward to working with you. I'm not going to make a long speech about President Schwartz or trustee Mandelker. I'll save that for the celebrations. But I will just say that I've known you both for a very long time. And you have both been just outstanding trustees. I think those of us that work at these colleges in this district, yes, we need the guidance. We need your wisdom. We need your, your community perspective that you bring in and some of your specialties. But more than anything else, you've always been there in terms of your support, and we have been through some challenges as any district does. I think for me, it was the Great Recession, the accreditation warning. I could go on and on, and I won't, but I knew as at first as a college president, and then certainly in the short time as a chancellor, you've both been so supportive, and you are there for our students, for our colleges in our district. And I know I'm going to keep in touch with both of you, but I'm going to miss working with you. And I want to thank you from my heart for everything that you've done. I also want to congratulate trustee-elect Pimentel and trustee-elect Patritis. I think they're excellent additions to the board. They did their homework well before the election, and I know that I've enjoyed working with both of them and meeting with them even prior to the election as they learn more about our district. But I also want to thank those that, those that actually ran as well. So I know I see Lisa Hicks-Dumansky. I think I saw her in the chat and others that ran. You know, I don't think I'm overstating it, but the foundation of our democracy is the ability for members of the public to, to take that mantle of leadership and do something. And so I have a lot of respect for anybody that considers a role as a public servant, particularly as a locally elected public servant. So thank you all. And I'm looking forward to the next chapter in this district. But it's going to be tough to say goodbye, both to President Schwartz and trustee Mandelker. And thank you so much. So I know Vice Chancellor Bailey, I went off script, but I felt I needed to say those things, but I do have some other things to share with you tonight. And, you know, I was joking with the team that we, it seems like we win an award a week lately. And so I'm going to share some, and some of these you know about, but I want to go on the record and recognize some, some pretty nice awards that our folks have won. And I will quote Jose, and I love this quote. Whenever I say a good thing about Jose, he always says one team. And he knows that it's not, when he got an award, he knew it was really him and his entire team. And I'm sure as I speak about some folks that have won some awards, they'll, they'll, I'll say the same thing. So first of all, I do want to recognize our international education program. This program was awarded the President's E-Award. This was originally developed by President John F. Kennedy. It's a national award that's given by the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Commerce. It is bestowed annually recognizing significant contributions to U.S. exports. Our district was only one of 28 recipients in the entire nation and was the only educational institution that was recognized for this award. So it was a big deal. I want to formally congratulate Dr. Jing Luon, and more importantly, don't take this offense to this, Jing, but the great team that you and the colleges have put together, and I know that they made this happen. So congratulations on that very prestigious award. Second, I want to congratulate two of our Vice Presidents of Instruction. And some of you know, I was a former Vice President of Instruction, and to be recognized by your peers, I think is probably the highest honor you can receive. So I'd like to congratulate Dr. Tammy Robinson, who is the Vice President of Instruction at Kenyatta College, and Dr. Jennifer Taylor-Mendoza, Vice President of Instruction at Skyline. And both of them were honored recently with the statewide Carter Duran Dolan, I'm sorry, Chief Instructional Officer Leadership Award. This is the first time this award has been given to multiple recipients that I can recall, and it is the highest award that you can receive from your peers. The award recognizes an instructional administrator who exemplifies leadership by showing qualities that Carter Duran embodied in his role as a teacher and a dean at Mount San Antonio and a Vice President of Instruction at Santa Ana and College of the Canyons, and actually knew Carter, and to be awarded in his honor is a big deal. In their citation, the President of the Vice Presidents of Instruction, Dr. Jennifer Vega-Lacerna, noted, "Dr. Robinson and Dr. Taylor Mendoza have exemplified courageous leadership and embody the spirit of the Carter-Duran Leadership Award. They have led with heart, demonstrated creativity, shown sustained commitment to addressing instructional challenges, and together have made a profound impact on their colleges and the entire California community college system." So again, I want to congratulate both Tammy and Jen for this very prestigious award. It's amazing. I'm a little jealous because, you know, I was a VP for a while. I don't think I was ever even nominated. So congratulations. I mentioned earlier that Jose Nunez, Vice Chancellor for Facilities and Planning, was recognized with the Ball Home Facilities Leadership Award. Once again, thank you, Jose. And then we just got word that Jonathan Bissell also received an international award for, in a, I think it was facilities maintenance. I don't have all the information in front of me, but I will share that with the board and later with the public. So I don't know who's going to be next, but it's been a good run of being recognized for outstanding work. There is no student report this evening, but at the December meeting, we would like to invite the associated student leaders from all three campuses to give an end-of-semester update to the board. And at this point, I know I've taken a lot of time, but I want to turn it over to the three college presidents if they have anything in particular they would like to share with the board and with the public. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay. Then I would like to move to CFO Bernadette Slater, if there's anything to share.
No, I don't have Chancellor Claire. I don't have any updates at this point. I do want to also shed your sentiment with regards to our departing Board of Trustees. I wanted to thank us all for the service to our institution. And in my short tenure with this, with San Mateo County Community College District, I very quickly learned that you care very deeply about our institution and about our student, and it shows. So thank you very much. I've learned a lot from you, from being on many board meetings and as well as many, as well as any other, through our other events. So thanks so much for all your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you, CFO Slater. And finally, I would like to ask if District Academic Senate President Wallace has any updates on behalf of the faculty.
Thank you, Chancellor Claire. Yeah, I think I'll probably chime in a little bit more when the AFT does their class caps presentation, but I would like to say for now that on behalf of the Academic Senate, I'd like to thank trustee Schwartz and Mandelker for being such great allies and supporters of the district faculty. It's been great working with you in my capacity, and I know many of the faculty really, really enjoyed your leadership and really appreciate your leadership and really looked to you for, for some really strong leadership. We wish you well in your, in your future endeavors, which hopefully includes a lot of rest and rejuvenation. Thank you.
Thank you, District Academic Senate President Wallace. President Schwartz, that concludes our report.
Thank you. I see that we have a hand raised all this time. Cheryl Johnson. There she is. Can we unmute her, please? Good evening, Ms. Johnson. We can't hear you. You're unmuted. The microphone is not on. You don't quite know what to do. Brian, do you have any ideas?
It may have been President Schwartz, and I don't want to speak for Dr. Johnson, and it might have been an accidental hand raise all the time in Zoom meetings, and certainly there's an opportunity to, to address the board comments from the public if Dr. Johnson wishes to do that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So we will move on to the three units who have, if they have anything special they want to say at this time. AFT is going to have their own special report in a couple of minutes, but is there anybody from AFT who would like to make any announcements? Okay. And now Daniela Meyer, mayor?
Yes, and actually, Rika Yanamura Fabian is also going to speak.
That's going to be, if you hold just a minute, that's going to be for your presentation. That's coming up in just a couple of minutes.
No, this is for the AFT, the section for the AFT statements.
It's a statement. Okay, fine.
Okay. So, hi, I'm Daniela Maher, and I'm here with Rika Yanamura Fabian from Skyline College. I've been a faculty member in San Mateo Community College since 2009. I was an adjunct for six years, and I've now been full-time in the English department for an additional six. I'm also the AFT Chapter Chair for Kenyatta College. And we are here today to represent AFT Anti-Oppression Committee. The committee was initially formed at the AFT Organized Teach-In held in September, called Social Justice Unionism in Practice: From Part-Time Pay Parity to Anti-Oppression Organizing. As a team of rank-and-file members, students, and AFT officers, we collaborate on activities that social justice unionism requires, going beyond the standard wage and benefits issues. The committee is charged with building solidarity through active education and conversation on and actions against anti-blackness, misogyny, ableism, cis, and heteronormativity, and other systems of oppression that our faculty and students face. At one of our first meetings, the Anti-Oppression Committee determined that connecting student equity goals with class size was something that we all had the passion to pursue. As the delegates of the Anti-Oppression Committee, we are here today to present the resolution on small class size as an important social justice measure the district can implement that would have a significant social justice impact on our students. The full resolutions document was sent to each of the board members, but we will explain our justifications and refer to our specific requests for your support. We have been pleased with the commitment across the district developing since summer to identify and challenge practices that result in disproportionate harm for Black students and other students of color, first-generation and low-income students, students with learning differences, and other students who have experienced marginalization in higher education. In my nearly 12 years with the district, I've seen a scrapple with the significant differences in success rates between student populations. These are important and difficult conversations to have, but they often start and end with the identification of these disparities as the development of practices to address them extend far beyond anything that one professor or one department can implement. That is why this moment and SMCCD's commitment is so important. It's an opportunity for us to actually work together to reach some of our equity goals and to implement anti-racist pedagogy across the district rather than through a patchwork of ideas. We don't have to start at the beginning. Over the last 10 years, faculty across disciplines within SMCCD have developed and led professional development activities, identifying the beneficial effects of student-centered pedagogical practices and the need to implement them even more broadly into our teaching. These include, but are not limited to, the development of cohort learning communities such as AMoja and Writing in the End Zone at CSM, Puente at Kenyatta, training faculty to develop student-centered practices through professional development like the Transforming STEM Teaching Faculty Learning Program, and connecting faculties, tutors, peer mentors, and counselors to approach teaching holistically. These are incredible programs, and we should build off them to develop coherent anti-racist pedagogy for our students. All of these interventions require faculty engagement with their students in a way that is completely different from the banking model of education that dominated the second half of the 20th century. We recognize that, among other factors that impact student success and learning outcomes, it is exactly the large lecture format that disproportionately impacts the most marginalized. I want to hand it over to Rika Yanamura Fabian to further discuss why this is.
Thank you so much, Daniela. Can anybody hear me? Yes. Great. Thank you. Hello, trustees and the community members. My name is Rika Yanamura Fabian. I teach sociology and social justice studies at Skyline College. I am also a Skyline Chapter Coach of AFT. I have been teaching in the district for 11 years by now, four of them as a full-time professor. Based on the background Daniela provided, I want to start with the rationale for smaller class size and why class size is an important consideration if we want to call ourselves as a social justice-oriented district. Class size and teaching methods are almost inherently intertwined. Larger class size increases a faculty's reliance on lecture as a primary method of instruction and decreases the active involvement of students with course materials and their peers. Research shows that in four-year colleges, students are most dissatisfied about large introductory courses precisely because they lack instructor-to-student or student-to-student interaction, and the opportunities for questions and discussions are limited. This is no mystery to anyone who teaches with justice and equity as their goal. I teach sociology of sex and gender. And this is a very popular class for students whose sexuality and gender identities are not conforming to the traditional norms of heterosexuality and gender binarism. LGBTQ plus students take this class because they are hungry to learn about their community's history because of their own personal experiences of oppression and because of their own personal experiences of oppression and because they want to learn strategies for social change. How can I make these LGBTQ+ students feel safe and heard and ensure that their identities are accepted and affirmed in the classroom in an anonymous big lecture class? Instructors who explicitly utilize an anti-racist pedagogical framework also face challenges in a large class. Anti-racist pedagogy requires not only an overhaul to the whitewashed course contents, but also student retention strategies to challenge the non-academic barriers to course success, including stereotype threat, racist misogyny abuse, previous educational trauma, and the racial battle fatigue experienced by students of color, especially our Black and Brown students. These strategies are very difficult to implement fully if the class is crowded with many students. If we really want to pursue anti-racist, anti-oppression pedagogy as an institution, class size is one factor we must consider as an essential element for student success. Currently, class size is determined by convention, room availability, and the decision has been typically left to individual administrators. For example, social sciences classes at Skyline College have a cap of 45, but there is no assessment about why 45 is the optimum size for the success of students of color, low-income students, and other students that come from a place of structural marginalization. Worse, it is a common practice to increase the cap of popular online or in-person classes to 75 and above. Professional development efforts on all three campuses have rightly pivoted to focus on anti-racist, anti-sexist pedagogies. This is great, but it is being done without examining one of the most obvious factors to student success. How many students is one teacher teaching one class? This is an important institutional discussion we have to have if we really want to walk the talk of social justice. As the Anti-Oppression Committee of AFT, supported by the District Academic Senate, College of San Mateo's Educational Equity Committee, and the Executive Committee of AFT, we have resolved to ask the Board of Trustees the following. We ask the Board of Trustees to support a 25% reduction in class size for all courses during the pandemic, regardless of the modality of instruction. We ask the Board of Trustees to commit to delineating and implementing a future process involving participatory governance bodies to lower class size based on social justice and equity principles in future semesters. And we ask San Mateo Community College District to make a concerted systematic effort in implementing lower class sizes, not to leave these decisions to individual administrator purview. We really appreciate the time today to bring this important issue to the board, and we have been so inspired by the discussions that have been happening across our district in response to the resolution. In particular, we want to thank the members of the District Academic Senate, CSM's Educational Equity Committee, and the AFT EC for voting to support the resolution. Today, some students will be also presenting on the same topic at this very meeting. We hope to keep working with fellow faculty, the Board of Trustees, and the students in order to make our students' learning experiences the best as they can be so that we do not have to keep reproducing the structural inequalities that have marked our society in the past. Thank you so much for your attention, and then our statement is it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Now, is there anybody from CSEA who would like to make any kind of an announcement? Annette Perom?
Okay. Good evening. Can we hear you?
We can hear you. Good evening.
Okay, good evening. On behalf of CSEA and nearly 400 chapter members, I would like to take this opportunity to thank both President Karen Schwartz and trustee Dave Mandelkern for all the years of service that you have provided to the San Mateo County Community College Board of Trustees. You have both been tireless advocates for the students of this district. I want to thank you for the support that you have given CSEA and for working with CSEA over the years. I would also like to congratulate trustee Goodman on your reelection and congratulate John Pimentel and Lisa Patritis on your election to the board. We look forward to working with the board as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette, and I will just take this opportunity to say that I've came to this district and leaving this district. I've always felt that the support is with the, the CSEA employees, and I congratulate your leadership over the years and all of them for all the hard work they've kept to keep this district moving in the right direction. Is there anybody from AFSM who would like to do any speaking tonight? I don't see any hands raised. So now we will move to statements from the public on any non-agenda items. If there's any statements, I will remind you that we have a three-minute rule and that members of the public are participating via Zoom. They should use your raised hand, which you just did, and members will be called upon to speak. So the first hand that I see is Jessica Silver Sharp. She can be unmuted. There you go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Jessica Silver Sharp, and I'm a reference librarian and an archivist. I've worked as a part-time or adjunct faculty librarian in this district for more than nine years, primarily at Skyline, but sometimes at Kenyatta as well. I'm so grateful to be working with and supporting community college students. I have a dynamic and a fulfilling career. However, I'm here today to talk about part-time faculty salaries, about fairness and compensation for my 600 part-time colleagues in this district. You may not be aware that unlike part-timers at nearby colleges, our part-time faculty are paid an hourly wage according to a different pay schedule than our full-time salaried colleagues. The salary schedule for part-timers has barely half the steps afforded to full-timers. The part-time schedule has 11 steps, the full-timers have 25. This means that by my eighth year in this district, my salary had maxed out. At age 51, I'm looking at no step increases for the next 16 years, even as I accumulate expertise as a senior faculty member and earn high marks on performance evaluations. Equally importantly, our district's part-time salary schedule doesn't recognize additional advanced degrees part-time faculty have, such as second masters and PhDs. It goes without saying that these degrees are time-consuming and expensive to earn, leaving many faculty in debt for years. SMCCD is one of the few districts in the Bay that pays adjunct faculty at an hourly rate, which is often less than 30%, which is often 30% less than full-timers with comparable education and experience. So these are faculty doing the same or similar work with our students. My question to you is this, why doesn't our district pay part-timers based on their education and experience? All of our neighboring community college districts do. West Valley Mission, Foothill De Nix De Anza, San Jose Evergreen, CCSF, College of Marin, Chabot Los Cefudas, and Peralta. These districts all pay adjunct faculty a salary rather than hourly compensation. The salary system is a fairer, more transparent way to compensate part-timers. Like the majority of adjunct faculty in our district, I don't have a full-time job aside from my library position. This means that without step increases until I retire, and with college tuition payments looming for our high school sophomore, our family must ask ourselves if remaining in the Bay Area is even viable. Many of our part-time faculty are asking themselves the same. How can they afford to continue teaching in our district, given the high Bay Area cost of living? A fair solution is for this district to do what our neighboring districts did years ago. Reform part-time pay practices and make them more commensurate with full-time salaries. The right time for making this change is now. Thank you for considering this important issue.
Thank you. Any other speakers for non-agenda items? Yeah, we'll move to the next part of the agenda, which is under Presentations to the Board by Persons' Delegations. Twenty-dash-eleven-one-C presentation by the AFT relating to class size. You just heard two of the speakers. I will just inform everybody that we were asked to have, they have asked to have a 30-minute presentation. Because of the heavy agenda, we reduced it to 20 minutes. But I have to give them credit for their creativity by putting their two, two speakers into a different section. So we've already heard from Daniela Mayer and Rika. So now I will introduce Marian Kuletsky, who I think will introduce the student speakers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I want to start by thanking all of you for taking the time to hear from us and our students tonight about this really important issue of class size and why we understand it as an equity issue. As you heard from Daniela Maher, over the summer, our union started an anti-oppression committee that's committed to advancing equity, including race and gender equity in our union, on our campuses, and in the communities to which we belong. We invited students as well as faculty and community members to join us on this anti-oppression committee, and we're really pleased to have a number of students show interest and start coming to our meetings as well as our teach-in. It was these students who brought to our attention all of the ways in which class size is an equity issue and their experiences seeing how small classes can close equity gaps. So I'm really delighted to introduce four of them today who are going to talk about their thoughts and their research on class size and especially its intersection with equity questions. And those students are Hannah Hershey, Jess Hasindo, Michael Sagum, and Brandon Wong. So thank you so much for hearing them and to them for being here.
Thank you. So who will go first? Brandon and Jess are both unmuted, so I don't know which one wants to speak first.
Michael, there's another presenter. Michael will be sharing the presentation.
Hello, I'm sorry, I'm a little unfamiliar. I don't think I have permission in order to share.
You need to share the screen.
Correct.
You should have shared permissions now.
I do not see the option currently.
I know on mine at the bottom, I have a share screen. Does he have that option? Or do we have to give it to him? Coming down, where are you?
Should we promote him to a panelist temporarily?
Yeah, I think, yeah, if that's what will work. Yes, we did tell him he could share his screen.
Okay, you're doing it now, President.
There we go.
Thank you all so much for your time. Our presentation is on limitations and conflicts of large class sizes. Next slide, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brandon Wong. I go to Skyline College. This is my sixth semester here. I am getting my AA in social justice studies, and my plan is to transfer to San Jose State University for a bachelor's in social work.
Everybody, my name is Jessica. I currently go to Skyline College. This is currently my seventh semester here, and my major is pre-law, interwoman, and gender ethnic studies.
Hello, this is my ninth semester at Skyline College. I am currently a social justice studies major, and I hope to transfer to SF State to do ethnic studies and to eventually become a professor.
Hi, my name is Hannah. I'm a student at the College of San Mateo. This is my sixth semester, and my major is English and sociology.
All right, so we did some research on class sizes, and here are a couple that really came to mind, stood out to us. The first one is Springer Link. The study found that final grades diminishes as the class size increases and larger impact on student performance could be attained by further trimming enrollment in small class, classes than by reducing class size of the law. Another study by an MIT journal said an increase in collegiate class sizes leads to an increase in dropout rates and reduction in on-time degree completion, and this further speaks to the importance of reduction in class sizes. And finally, there is a University of Brooklyn study that found that larger classes appear to prompt faculty to alter the courses in deleterious ways to students. We are aware that these studies may be general and relative to San Mateo Community College District. However, we do have student testimonials, which these findings can support. Excellent, please. Jess?
Yes. Oh, I think it froze on my screen, but social justice aspect of smaller class sizes. So if you were to have smaller class sizes, this would help students of color, working-class students, students with learning differences, and students of other forms of marginalized identities stop benefit from smaller class sizes. So if this were to happen, this would allow more individualized interactions between students and professors, qualitative assessments, increased access to professors, and creates a sense of community within the class.
So we had created a survey and presented it to ASCSM as well as the Associate Students of Skyline and asked them to, to present this survey to students at both colleges. And so we were provided with a few testimonials with students, from students that I'll read out. So smaller class sizes allow for a more personal relationship with the professor, and my overall experience is more positive. A smaller class size fosters a more wholesome environment, and I'd like to have more of them. Another student claimed that I prefer smaller classes. In my opinion, it helps me build a better understanding of the material as well as a better relationship with my professors and classmates. There are times I have questions, but I feel like I'd be bothering my teachers who are already juggling so much as they transition to an online model and juggle hundreds of students for a single course. Finally, another student said smaller class sizes allow for more intimate and personalized learning, but I also enjoy hearing others' ideas and perspectives in larger groups.
And here we will share some of our own personal testimonies. I remember when my class was seven students one semester. Throughout that entire semester, we all got to know each other really well. We learned how to lean on each other as well as do small things like bringing everyone snacks. We spent all that time together being able to really build rapport, not just with each other as students, but also with our professor. There was one day in the semester where everyone was feeling stressed out, but no one talked about it. It was our professor who knew us so well at that point, who decided to focus on our emotional and mental needs as students. And I don't think our professor would have been able to do that or to realize our struggles if she didn't get to know us all individually as people. And I feel like this is why we should have smaller class sizes. I mean, community colleges are supposed to have smaller class sizes compared to the huge lecture halls at four-year institutions. And when these class sizes are smaller, we get to build rapport with our professors, the point where we feel comfortable to advocate for our needs. When our class sizes are small, our professors don't become overloaded with the needs of 100 students in one class, 30 students in another class, and 10 to 40 students in another. By creating a smaller class size in which students can create meaningful connections with their professors and peers, professors are able to really support each individual student for them to be successful without feeling burnt out.
Hello, everybody. This is Jess. So this is my fourth year here at Skyline College. I have encountered great people who have shared the same passion and thrive as me, being active members of society. Having made unique connections, I have developed a strong sense of community. Skyline was a place where I could make friends and demonstrate my passion for a social change. Skyline was a place where I could make friends and demonstrate my passion for a social change. However, I've became accustomed to learning in a classroom setting of 50 students like me eager to learn. I have countered days where students, where teachers have not gone in through the whole lectures to answer students' questions, to days where I'm sinking a sense of belonging in a classroom just because of the limited time and accessibility with professors and classmates. Last semester, I enrolled in an online history class that was suited to my flexibility. Discussions were a big part of the course, so it was essential to communicate with each class member and respond. I was shocked to know I participated in discussions that would with numerous students. I would come across discussions where it would have at least 100 to 150 unread responses. I felt like I was a part of a box of 50, 150 or more peers while trying to find our way through the class material. I began to develop a habit of turning in homework assignments late due to the overwhelming response. I was unable to successfully be a part of a classroom and start a discussion with so many people. I began to develop a habit of turning in homework late because of the motivation I lacked. So I do thrive when I am comfortable asking questions about understanding lectures and sharing thoughts with a close knit community. I'm most confident that creating a smaller community per teacher can motivate students to continue learning. Additionally, smaller class size can assist students who have been historically marginalized in higher education again. This will help better the learning environment, build stronger relationships, and provide a better accessibility to specialized help for each student. Thank you for your time.
And one thing that we would like to highlight is that we are not the only students who have pushed for smaller class sizes. In the recent summer, CSM soon forum had recommendations about the benefits of smaller class sizes. And here are some that were very similar to ours. And we want our instructors to worry about us. We want to hire faculty that are student centered and want to engage with students. And lastly, smaller class sizes, we want smaller class sizes so faculty will have more time for us, just like Michael and Jess mentioned in their testimonies.
Hi, so I'd like to provide a closing statement. As faculty continue to be overworked in larger classes, students will continue to feel neglected and alienated from their academic journey. Large class sizes serve as an obstacle for SMCCD students and ultimately prevent us from receiving a quality education. Education that faculty and administration alike have fought hard to provide for our community. In a large class, it is easy to feel like a cog in a machine. Checking off assignments and attending lectures becomes a chore with little attachment towards what you're learning, how you're learning, who you're learning it from, and who you're learning it with. The learning process in a larger classroom is oppressive and only serves to further restrict students at SMCCD, such as students of color, students with disabilities, and students that come from working class families who already deal with many other institutional and systemic obstacles. The connection formed between professors and peers in a classroom of modest size is severed in a large classroom where one is but a minnow in a large school of fish. Those who struggle get lost in the crowd and fall prey to any number of internal or external obstacles that will disrupt their education. Programs such as counseling and tutoring may provide some much needed respite, but without an engaging and intimate learning environment, it can feel hard to it can be hard to feel motivated to complete assignments, show up to class, or even feel driven enough to seek external help outside of the classroom. While it would be great for all students to share Michael's experience in a small class of seven students, we also understand that it is not sustainable for all classes to share the same size. However, we feel that it is unacceptable that students are falling behind and will continue to do so when confronted with overwhelming class sizes. On top of this, COVID-19 has largely changed how we interact with our education. The obvious deficiencies that are present in a fully online academic experience are exacerbated with the stress surrounding the pandemic. We think that one of the best ways to mitigate such problems is for students to feel like they matter and that they're supported by faculty and students that they interact with on a near daily basis. Without the opportunity to meet in person, students have limited access to the typical classroom environment. These shortcomings are further pronounced in larger classes where office hours may be congested with many other students and there is little time for informal conversations with faculty and students alike. Such conversations are necessary for building rapport and trust that keeps both parties motivated. Consequently, smaller class sizes are crucial for student success as not only will students have more access to resources within the course, but amidst hardships surrounding the pandemic, they will be able to maintain their hope and drive to continue their academic careers. While we understand that establishing smaller class sizes is not the most cost effective action, we ask that the Board of Trustees think beyond monetary gains and losses. A student's education should not be contingent on statistics and margins of profit. Us students are entitled to an academic experience that makes us feel respected and appreciated. Unfortunately, when classrooms are crowded and in-class resources are scarce, we feel that we are treated like merchandise harvested for revenue to the business of higher academia. We are people who are ready and eager to learn but are hindered by the very institution that is supposed to teach us and give us tools to better our world. We ask that you strongly consider providing students with courses that have reduced class sizes and implement this request as soon as possible. We refuse to remain silent as we experience and see our peers experience strife and conflict that is further aggravated by the obstacles present in overcrowded classes. Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to open up the fourth question. If we have any time remaining.
Can we take away the screen so that we can, I can see if there's anybody that wants to ask a question at this time? Thank you. Um, any questions or comments from fellow board members? Trusty Oliver?
Well, just I appreciate the presentation and I think it really was was very well done and very, very solid points were made by everyone. I think my question is really sort of a process kind of question. So this is AFT presentation. I, at least my understanding, this is representative of AFT's official position on this. Just want to make sure that that is accurate. Has AFT raised this? I'm just curious in the negotiation process. Just maybe a question through the chair for our chancellor or for AFT to respond.
I do know they referred to a resolution and so that I think we've all, the board members all received. I don't know if that's strictly from AFT or I don't have it in front of me. Chancellor Claire, would you like to respond?
Trusty Oliver, thank you so much. And I may have to defer to Mitch Bailey because I'm not actually at the table every day. But you know, class size is a bargaining issue. And so I think that's appropriately discussed at the bargaining table, in my opinion. I have been pleased frankly with the work between the Academic Senate and the administration. And I think by extension, the AFT and trying to work out class sizes during the pandemic. I think we also owe it to the board at some point to provide our research on the correlation between class size, which I believe is about average class size across the district. It's about 27 students per class right now. That's average. I realize that some are bigger, some are smaller. And student success, I think that I think that that's important that we put that out for discussion and review as well. But to answer your question, I believe class size in the context of the the MOUs have been discussed in bargaining.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Um, the only comment I will make is I want to compliment the students. I think you put together an absolutely terrific presentation. You make me proud that you're all students here at this district, so your cause is well taken, but I think somebody, we're all, your faculty are doing a wonderful job in education. In education, so education with your education. So keep it up. And I think we will move on from this at this time. I don't see any other hands raised or comments. But thank you for, thank you for this. And I'm sure that everybody will be talking about this item in a future time. We will now move to new business, 20-11-1A, approval of personnel item changing assignment compensation placement leaves.
No move.
Thank you very much. I need a motion, which I have in a second, please.
Okay.
You Goodman, thank you. Staff, is it okay, is this the one? Staff has asked to, okay. Am I getting confused? No. Staff has asked to correct one technical error on the personnel report under section C for the position to be filled by Nellie Manuel. She will be replacing Grace Guli, who retired, not Rita Guli, who was listed on the report. No, this is not taken. David Fune is always with us to answer any questions if board members have them. Are there any public or public comments? Any questions for board members? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, aye, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. 20-11-2A, adoption of resolution, resolution number 20. Wait. Adoption of resolution number 20-17, fixing the employer contribution under section 22895 of the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act, approve, approval of consent agenda. So I need a motion in a second.
Move, move.
Thank you. Again, we have David Fune. If there's any questions. Public comments. Call for the vote. All in favor, aye, aye. Motion passes. Consent agenda. 20-11-1C, A, approval of curricular additions, deletions, modifications, Kenyatta College, College of San Mateo, Skyline. 20-11-2C, in relation to minutes of April 24th, 2019. Would any members like to remove any items? So we will take them to, thank you, in a second, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh. So we didn't remove any more. Ready to, any comments or questions? We'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye, aye. Motion passes. 20-11-101B, authorization to execute an agreement with EXOS Community Services for operation of the San Mateo Athletic Club in partnership with the district. Need a motion in a second for discussion?
Move.
Thank you, a second. I'll second that. Chancellor Claire will introduce the report.
Thank you, President Schwartz. And we are bringing back to you per your request and direction, the, and consideration, the agreement with EXOS. If you recall, for the benefit of the public, and the board knows this, that we were, we received authorization to proceed with negotiations with EXOS. We hope that this particular, sorry, we hope that this particular contract reflects some of the some of the concerns that were raised by the board. We believe it does. But I have Vice Chancellor Bauer and Yanelli Polito here. As I mentioned, I think in a separate communication with you, a good, a good portion of the contract is boilerplate that we use for most of our service agreements. And you know, hopefully that's standard legal stuff. But I think it's really in the exhibit that, you know, is where we feel if you have questions or you know, that's kind of where the discussion belongs. So I'll stop there. And I think, I don't know whether Yanelli or Tom has anything else to add, but we'll leave, we'll leave it there for your, for your questions or comments.
Nothing else to add from me, Chancellor Claire.
Yeah, Hillary, anything from you? Okay. So I got any questions or comments from board members?
I did, um, yeah, I did correspond with Vice Chancellor Bauer, who responded to a couple of questions I had that dealt with the incentive payment. And just I guess to return to one of them because I'm trying to juggle my screen here and look at it. And it had to do with, I'm not sure if I have the right term, reaching a certain return on investment. That's not the term. Basically, net income, I'm sorry, I can't look at both of these at the same time, but and I think it was, the answer was to be determined, which, yeah, net operating income. I don't know if, if there could be more elaboration on how, how we're going to, assuming this contract is in effect. There's language saying they get a bonus if they exceed a certain net operating income amount, but that amount is not spelled out in this contract.
That's correct. I mean, so I could speak a little bit to that. So we have a couple of challenges. So the first is that this contract actually spans a calendar year instead of a fiscal year. So what I tried to explain is we don't have a budget yet for calendar year 2021 on which to base that. With the unknowns of COVID, I, I'm struggling right now to project what fall of 21 is going to look like. So yes, there is language in there that speaks to this, but in my response to you, Trusty Oliver, and and if it needs to be codified in the contract, I'm sure EXOS will be happy to do that. I will not support paying any type of an incentive on a bottom line that is negative. So I understand that the wording of it is that they will receive an incentive if they meet the bottom line that's budgeted. And right now, we haven't budgeted one yet. We're going to start working on it on that as soon as we can. But again, there's still a lot that's unknown. So if we need to codify the fact that if we're in the negative, pay a bonus on that, I believe EXOS, I've spoken to them, they're amenable to that as well. But right now, I don't have a budget for you for 2021. There's too many things I don't know.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Oh, yeah, just on, just to piggyback on that, I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable entering in a contract without that in there or something that speaks to that. If it's the bottom line or if it's something, but, or if we're negative, it should, it should read that. And there should be some mention to it before that contract is executed. It just doesn't seem like good business to say, okay, well, we, the board authorized a separate agreement and then it's changed midway through without coming back before the board because it was already authorized for it to be approved.
I totally hear you and agree with you, Trusty Goodman. We've never proposed a budget or never had a budget before for something that was negative. So this is, this is brand new territory for me. I've never done that. So I did speak with representatives from EXOS earlier today and, and I, and I just when we went into COVID in March and we had to shut down, that actually approached the district about reducing their management fees so that we can make this work work for the employees. So they are about the partnership. So I think if the board is amenable to approving the contract with the caveat that will add language that if we are obviously in a negative position with regard to NOI, that that will not apply. I, I think we can make that happen. I think one of the things, and I'll defer to Yanelli if she wants to speak to this, is that this we don't want to be totally limited, I guess, at this point to what is voted on now. We, we can't change or we can't amend to the benefit of the district in the future. So I think we're looking to for some guidance from the board about changes to this agreement and how they're to be dealt with if they come up.
Right. And I think that's what I'm speaking to. I mean, I know this is all uncharted territory for us all. But what I'm speaking to is the urgency, the sense of urgency or lack thereof at this immediate time with possibly, possibility of us being extended, extended closures for gyms, you know, with the, with COVID right now. We're not, we don't know exactly where we are going. It would make more sense to do some, some real assessment. It would make more sense to do some, some real assessment, obviously listening to the science, the data. And obviously our, our business people to really make sense of what is most optimal for us to, what type of contract to enter in. To enter into a management contract where we're expending an exorbitant amount of dollars for a service that we're not offering. May not make sense right this moment, but it will make sense if, you know, we're, we're going to be open for us extended period of time come twenty twenty-one. And I think that's what I'm speaking to and not necessarily having the board agree to terms or what ifs tonight versus taking an extra week or two and actually working with Exos if, if in fact we are doing that, that we hammer out everything and have the possibilities within that contract. I don't feel comfortable with my experience over the last five years on this board entering into a contract that possibly may be changed after we approved it.
Okay, and Trustee Mandelkeren.
Yeah, I've echoed Trustee Goodman's concerns in the sense that, you know, we're, the county and the state is moving backwards in terms of COVID at the moment. You know, the operation of the Samatale Athletic Club may become a moot point in the next several weeks to months. We don't know what the future is going to look like with COVID. I was concerned that this agreement does not seem to have a, what would seem to be fairly obvious, a shutdown clause in it, which is if we have to shut the club down, do we continue paying this thirty thousand dollar a month management fee to Exos? That, that doesn't seem to be an appropriate use of district funds if the club is shut down. It just seems like kind of an obvious concern that should have been addressed in the contract that was not. I'll add in a second concern that I have, which is we have two new board members who will be joining next month. We'll be having to live with this agreement going forward. I believe that they should have some voice in this agreement since they're the ones that are going to have to live with this. I, I'm not clear what the urgency is of having this approved tonight as opposed to giving a time for the new board members to review this and being able to vote on it at the board meeting in December, which would still be before the, you know, expiration date of the current contract. So my preference would be is to, is to be able to let the board members who will be living with this agreement going forward weigh in and approve it or not approve it or modify it as they see fit, rather than with the board, which has two members departing after this meeting, approving something that the rest of the board will have to live with going forward.
Chancellor.
I appreciate the conversation. You know, I guess I have a couple of responses. First of all, the athletic club is operating the same way we're operating our courses. There's a lot of online offerings and I, you know, I'm not the expert here, but I would argue there's probably additional expenses that have been incurred switching to this online mode. We have pages and pages of thank yous actually from members. I opted not to share that with you tonight because I, I, you know, it's just, it's just people saying different things, but I think we got to recognize that we are serving people. I do feel a sense of urgency. And the reason why is because if we don't have an agreement, I can understand, you know, sharpening some of this and I, and Trustee Goodman, I understand your point. But the bottom line is we're running out of time and if we don't have an agreement, we shut the doors literally and figuratively on January first. And frankly, I'm worried about the employees of Samatale Athletic Club. There's about, I think there's a hundred and forty employees. And if, and if we shut down, I think we owe it to them to let them know sooner rather than later. So if we're not able to take action on this tonight, I would respectfully request that we come back sooner rather than later, even just in fairness to the employees. I've also asked, well, what would be the impact if we did shut the doors on January first? And we would actually owe about four hundred thousand dollars in membership fees back. So there's some real economic impact here as well that, you know, we, we need to think about. So I just say that with respect because I need this board to understand the consequences of of not taking timely action, I suppose, is how I would say.
All due respect, Chancellor Claire, it's, it's not the board. I think it's, it's, it's staff. I mean, these concerns that we have seem very reasonable to ask. And to assume that this board would enter in an agreement that we know that very may, very may well be changed. Or if we're having conversations a day of this meeting with Exos saying, hey, we may do this or we may do that. Where's the sense of urgency on your staff to actually ask those questions and make sure you bring us that information and you do that on the front end? And so I, I just want to push back just a bit respectfully, that it's not this board. We only meet a few times a month, if that. And so we're acting with what you're putting before us. And so, you know, on a daily basis, if, if staff can be meeting with Exos, with, can be meeting with county officials and finding out what's reasonable to expect. If there's a reasonable expectation that we will be in closed and we will be having some type of online programming for SMAC, then that's understandable. But if we're, if Trustee Mandelkeren's question is if we're going to be shut down, why is it not reasonable to have a shutdown clause in the contract? Why was it not reasonable to have someone in that room that was a part of this drafting of this agreement to ask that question? And so that's what our concern is. And so of course, you know, coming in the eleventh hour and saying, hey, it's about our, our staff. Well, one of the concerns that I had, that I did bring up and that I would have hoped would have been about the, a part of this contract was that of our staff. And ensuring that health and safety protections were there outside of, you know, the fair employment practice clause in this agreement. What other health and safety protections do these employees have? That our faculty and staff have at our campuses when it comes to COVID, when it comes to air quality? And so those are some of the concerns that I have that weren't addressed by this contract that I don't see. You know, in addition to these protections, what assurances do we have to ensure that these employees will continue to be paid a reasonable salary? You know, and, and so there, those concerns that protect this faculty or the staff of this, of SMAC. So those are some concerns we have, not just of them, you know, whether or not we're going to be closed January one, because I don't think that would be the intention of this body. I think definitely we would find a way to make sure, even if it's a one-month extension, to make sure that we get something taken care of long-term, that that would be what this body would be working towards.
Trustee Harris.
I'm, I'm concerned about the fact that some of these important questions, I understand, Trustee Goodman, you raised some things that you just articulated, but there are things that are being articulated right now. Obviously, the, Trustee Holliver had questions as soon as he received it and read it and addressed his questions to the administration and the administration then did respond. And I'm hearing now that we have other concerns that, that are, that are considered sufficient enough to put this thing off, which we're not put the staff that perhaps could have been taken care of in the last three or four days instead of tonight and putting this thing over. This board is the board that knows this contract, this situation better than anyone else as far as that goes and can address the issues with the most amount of knowledge. And to kick the can down the road to a new board that basically is not up to speed on any of it can only slow this thing down to the detriment of the members of SMAC and the entire program because there is a time deadline. Now, regardless of why we're here and what is the reason for the time deadline, that's not important anymore. It's what we do now and where we go forward with it. And we have several many thousands of members, obviously, that are part of this organization that are members and they are paying their dues even now when they're getting no service or they're getting limited service. And it appears that we're not hearing complaints from thousands and thousands of people at SMAC. Just a small handful that have a specific interest. And so we are in a contract that is for one year. We have a, a, we have a way of getting out of it if we want to. By calling a, by calling it, what is it? Is it ninety days? I'm trying to recall where the contract can be, can be terminated. It's not working properly. And so we have that. And I, I mean, I'm concerned about the fact that we would have dues that we would have to give back if we were to close. I think we need to look at this, obviously, as, as a contract, but this contract is a contract that is like so many other contracts that we deal with. And I think that if we start to want to add so many extra details to this that we would not require of any other contract, would basically drag this thing out to the point that maybe it doesn't happen. And then we're really up against it and we're going to be not serving the people that are members of this club that deserve something better. So I think we can give some direction as to what we just talked about now as far as the negative balance. There may be a couple of other things that we can add and I think we should move forward with this contract with a few of those directions.
Thank you. Trustee Mandelkeren.
Yes, thank you. I have a problem with the premise that we, we have two options, either approve the contract that's presented to us tonight or the club shuts down on January first. I don't believe that those are the only options. I believe we have other options that could be pursued, which would not involve shutting the club down on January first. We've seen another vendor that was interested in bidding on this club and operating this club. We have the ability to step in with our own district personnel and run this club on a short-term or long-term basis. I believe there are at least those two, if not more, alternatives. In fact, we could have additional board meetings called to approve a contract when it's necessary. I would rather get this contract done right than to be told that we must approve what we have tonight or the club shuts down on January first. I simply don't accept that as the, as the two options in front of us. I do have concerns in the contract that was presented to us about the incentive bonus payments, both the, the net operating income based component, not just the issue that was responded to Trustee Holliver about if there's a negative income, what happens to this, but simply how is the positive in net income set? You know, if we have a positive net income of five thousand dollars, does that trigger a twenty-five thousand dollar or a fifty thousand dollar bonus payment to Exos? I mean, this is again, not simply not spelled out and we're leaving this up to future negotiations between our staff and the Exo staff, is my presumption, to, to set that amount, which does not, you know, please me as a board member approving a contract to basically be signing a blank check. I am also concerned about the introduction of a new concept that we have never seen before in our contract with Exos or our relationship with Exos around using net promoter score to base a substantial chunk of the bonus payment on a seventy-five thousand dollar bonus payment based on achievement of a middling net promoter score. I'm very familiar with a net promoter score. I've used that and the ultimate question in my own businesses to ascertain customer satisfaction and customer loyalty. And one of the things when you go through net promoter score training and the documentation around with it and the implementation of it, they say specifically is it is not a key performance indicator. It is not to be used to do things like exactly what we're talking about here to base a bonus payments based on this because it's, it's a number that if you have a financial stake in this can be actually fairly easily manipulated. So I, I am not happy with the introduction of net promoter score as a key to a significant bonus payment in this contract of seventy-five thousand dollars. So that is another concern that I have in this contract that I think is misguided to, to use that as a bonus payment trigger. So that's, that, that's my other concern that I'd like to bring up tonight.
Yeah, Oliver.
I move to table this item.
To table it for what?
Table it. If there's a second, it's not subject to debate. It goes directly.
Or it goes directly to the vote?
Yeah.
I have to apologize because I missed public comment. So should I go back to that or should we go directly to the vote?
I will.
And that's my error.
Let me, let me withdraw temporarily for public comment and then I will make that motion.
Okay, thank you. And I take responsibility for that. Frank E.
Actually, I think Sam would like to go before me. Sam, Sam can raise his hand and I'll come on following Sam.
Okay, Sam.
Thank you. Many thanks to Trustee Schwartz and Trustee Mandelkeren for their service to the community. Members of the board, I am here today to present to you my concerns with regards to the labor practices of Exos and to reconsider the renewal of the Exos contract. We understand Dinah Thomas may have requested that some of her employees speak on her behalf. We've also requested some former and current employees to participate if they feel at ease. But we suspect that most will not for fear of retaliation and being blackballed by the industry. Furthermore, I would like to advocate for the establishment of an advisory committee, which includes employee and board member representation for oversight. There are some issues regarding how Exos manages its employees and the toxic environment it has created, as evidenced by the eighty percent rate of attrition. Please consider that many of the staff who work at SMAC are part of the student community, a community that deserves a voice without the fear of reprisals. The best method to address this problem is to have a third-party conducted anonymous employee survey. Proven method, which could provide valuable insight and to improve staff morale and retention rates. Another troubling instance that we have encountered are possible accounts of wage hour violations pursuant to California Labor Code two-two-six, for having failed to keep adequate employment records and not have not properly or adequately recorded hours worked during their employment. Terms are clearly defined in Exos's handbook. Hourly workers are entitled to a non-paid thirty-minute meal break after five hours of scheduled work and a paid ten-minute rest break every four hours. Employees termed team members in the handbook are required to record the break. Speaking from personal experience and accounts from other parents and employees, coaches and instructors are often scheduled for more than a five-hour period without the possibility of a meal break or rest break. Time records were subsequently altered in the system to account for the thirty-minute meal penalty so that the timesheet would adhere to California Labor Law. Instructors would not be compensated for the missed meal break and Exos would incur no penalty as a result. Not only does that seem like a clear violation of California Labor Code, Exos is also ignoring the policies set forth in their own employee's handbook. In addition to possible labor violations prior to COVID, employees that are currently in financial distress are not allowed to find work outside of Exos to supplement their income. Conflict of interest portion of the employee's manual explicitly states that Exos does not prohibit team members from working second non-competing or non-competing jobs, that every team member will exercise his or her best judgment with respect to each situation. Final decision ultimately rests with Exos, stating that the team member may be asked to terminate the activity or the outside employment if he wishes to remain with Exos. Those hourly workers who have been asked to return are only working a fraction of their usual hours while not being allowed to look for supplemental work. Employees who have asked to be allowed to work additional hours at other facilities or even to provide private lessons to supplement their wages are denied under the pretense of non-compete and the threat of termination. This is a wanton disregard for the well-being of this, of their so-called team members in these trying times. Perhaps the most telling metric is the rate at which employees are leaving as well as past and ongoing litigation due to labor disputes and hostile working environment. Team members who report issues to management are similarly ignored. Suggestions from coaches made in the interest of the members are dissuaded and discouraged. Staff, mostly consisting of students, would rather quit than voice their concerns. Employees who were dismissed or have quit in the past are put into a six-month cooling off period, effectively a ban from SMAC. Again, SMAC is a taxpayer-built and supported community asset, not a private enterprise. This entity has no business arbitrarily excluding community members who wish to pay for access, regardless of when or how their employment may have ended. Our requests to the Exos Corporate Council regarding this policy have gone largely unanswered. This rate of turnover is not only bad for morale, but bad economically. More junior and less experienced staff are hired at a higher wage just to fill vacant staffing positions, driving up the cost and making current employees feel underappreciated and underpaid. Staff retention is a clear indicator of management practices and overall regard for their employees. Twenty percent staff retention rate is an obvious fail. The goal of setting budget incentives for Exos, while well-intentioned as it may seem, these certain parties open to game the system at. at the expense of users and employees. Performance goals are only effective if the operator tries to achieve them legitimately and in good faith. Clearly, this is not the case with Exos. An incentive target NPS score of 40 out of 100 is quite low, considering the socioeconomic base where SMAC is located. I'm asking that the board reconsider the renewal of the contract in light of the conduct as exhibited by Exos thus far. Regardless, more substantial terms and employee representation and surveys need to be included in this contract to dissuade all interested parties from taking advantage and profiteering off this community. Thank you, members of the board, for your time and consideration.
Frank.
Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
I was waiting for that to pop up. Good evening. To perhaps add some credibility to my comments, let me tell you a little bit about my professional background. My undergraduate graduate, my undergraduate degree is in accounting, followed by a master's in finance, both from UC Berkeley. I have worked in finance for over 40 years, and I still do. At your last board meeting, we were shown an RFP pricing matrix comparing Exos and Power Wellness, a matrix not provided in advance. Based on the explanation given, it seemed to me that pricing was about equivalent between the two bidders, and I said so at the meeting. Now, having had a chance to study, I see the two bids are not close at all. Back to the comparison. If we awarded this contract to Exos, I believe we'll be paying approximately $341,000 more than needed. Let's walk, let's walk through it. First, remember last year we paid Exos $350,000 in regular fees and $160,000 incentives for a grand total of $510,000, about a half million dollars. No incentive fee showed in the comparison matrix. Was that not part of the Exos bid? Now we can see the actual Exos contract, and indeed, there is an incentive fee up to $125,000. Was that incentive fee part of Exos's original bid? Subsequently increased, decreased, or added? We don't know, not shown in the matrix. Regardless, under the proposed contract, if Exos meets fairly low hurdles, which you're talking about right now, their total fees for 2021 will be $485,000. $485,000 in a year when SMAC revenues are likely to be cut in half due to COVID-19. Doesn't that seem out of proportion when we also pay all the operational expenses? A former employee told me SMAC is Exos's most lucrative contract in the country. Okay, on the other hand, we have a bid from Power Wellness, which is shown as $226,000 on the comparison matrix. That is substantially below the $485,000, and had we seen those two numbers side by side, we may have reached a different conclusion about the most attractive bid. But the difference is actually greater. Because under the Power Wellness's pricing scheme, their fee will decrease, decrease while we live through depressed COVID revenues, decrease to $144,000 for 2021. Yes, $144,000. That nuance is buried in the fine print of the comparisons. $144,000 versus $485,000. You probably don't need a master's in finance to know that's significant. There were some other adjustments shown on the pricing matrix, which led us to believe the prices were closed. At best, we might have 20,000 to 30,000 items to consider that are legitimate. If more explanation is needed, perhaps admin can flash the matrix back on our screens so I can walk you through it. And I could identify some items not shown that swing at the other way. But I think that exercise distracted us from the main point, a fee difference of $341,000, more than three times as much if we go with Exos. And if we go with Exos, we are sending a clear signal to future bidders: Do not bother. There is a silver lining here. In spite of all the construed obstacles for this RFP and trying to get bidders, we actually got a very favorable alternative, $144,000. I think unlikely we can do better. That leads me to my conclusion: No need to conduct another RFP. We have a clear path: Award the contract to the low bidder. And I agree with trustee Mandelker. It's very common in these situations to go to a month a month if more time is needed for a transition, and I've been informed a transition can occur as quickly as 60 days. Last meeting, we discussed both companies were roughly equivalent on qualitative factors, 85 versus 95. Is that difference worth three times as much? I did my own reference check on Power Wellness and learned clients are generally happy, they have many community locations, are very committed to employee satisfaction, and measure both employee and member satisfaction frequently. How refreshing, and to me, even more important than the savings. If we make this change, we can keep the same employees and not miss a beat. Trustees, I urge you to move forward with this other bidder with a one-year trial. This is the time to do it while we have fewer employees, less going on at SMAC, and the other two college enterprises dormant. Admin should have extra time to work on a transition. If not now, when are we ever going to do it? Administration, I know a switch of operators is not what you want, and I don't blame you. It's a hassle. We have, we have had great success with Exos, and change is threatening. Remember, however, we would not be starting from scratch, rather building on your and Exos's great success. Ultimately, these savings will go towards our full-time students and programs. That was the vision: Revenues for students, right? For this to succeed, however, we need you to embrace it and work your magic on it. Thank you very much.
Barbara Jones. Ms. Barbara, unmuted. Barbara Jones, are you able to unmute? She's disappeared. How about Nancy Littlefield?
Can you hear?
Yep.
In the interest of time, I will keep my remarks brief. I know that you all have a lot of business this evening, and I thank you for your consideration. I'm getting back to you regarding the formation of the advisory board that we discussed starting in August. Myself and a number of people have worked together with Vice Chancellor Bauer to begin that process. And just in summation, it's been a frustrating engagement, because I believe that most of the time, our meetings have involved being informed of decisions that had already been reached, rather than providing input into a decision-making process, which is what I had envisioned an advisory group would be about. Since the last board meeting where we spoke up about our concerns about Exos, communication as people, as an ad hoc advisory committee have really not, there's been very little communication. We actually received a response to a letter that we sent to the administration on November 9th. We got a response this afternoon regarding how the advisory board process would go forward. And, you know, I think some of the things that Chancellor Claire said were reassuring, because it was not at all clear that the advisory board was not going to be applications taken and a selection made by the Exos administration. In some kind of the discussions that we've had have led us to believe that there's really been a flawed RFP process that has favored the incumbent operator, and also that there are no protections in the current contract that's being presented to you for assessing employee satisfaction and employee retention. And we'd really like to see that advanced. If we're to have as an advisory board, once that gets, a permanent advisory board gets constituted, we'd like to really have some guarantee that there will be a genuine impact from the community input as well as input from college staff and college administration. We'd like you, to urge you to reconsider on the current SMAC contract. I think it's wise to look at developing a hybrid model going forward so that there's more involvement of the protections for employees that happen through the college, rather than through the private corporation. And that we really need to remodel the RFP process so that we get more than one competitive bid for a contract of this significance. We're also looking forward to an RFP process for the Canyota facility and feel like that really needs to have a much more competitive environment to get a good operator for that facility going forward. Again, thank you for your time and consideration. I know there's been a lot of input here.
Thank you. Laying Palms.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to first thank you all for your time and energy that you've given to this subject, because I know it has been very tedious. Each of us in our group, as the board of trustees, are volunteering our time and efforts because we all care. I believe that we are all doing this because we want to see our district have a fair, fiscally sound, and ethically responsible process for selecting a vendor to run our facility. And so I ask you to think about these three points as you make your decision to vote regarding the contract presented before you. Number one, was the award of this contract to the current vendor achieved through a fair and transparent process? Is it the best financial decision for our district? No, I do not believe it is in our best interest, given Frank Elliott's analysis. Two, does it ensure that present and future members' voices can be heard and acknowledged? Will an advisory committee reporting to the present vendor and vice chancellor with no direct access to the final decision-makers achieve this? Given the past few weeks of meetings with the vendor and vice chancellor, I see no assurance of impacting the final decisions. Three, and most importantly, are we serving the employees of this facility, many of which are students at the College of San Mateo, by ensuring that they have a positive work environment that fosters their growth and values their input? Again, I say no. We do not serve the present and future employees of SMAC if we keep the present vendor, who has clearly not made employee satisfaction a priority. Our group believes that all the present trustees, many of whom have been involved since the creation of this enterprise, which trustee Norris has said, should be the ones to decide how to move forward and not pass this decision on to the incoming trustees, who will need time to come up to speed. We urge you to not give the contract to the present vendor and award to the other competent vendor. Thank you all.
Thank you. Barbara Jones.
So, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
So sorry about the mix-up before. Thank you again. My name is Barbara Jones. I'm a former Exos employee at SMAC. I would like to give you an example of Exos's top-down management approach, which I believe is not a beneficial approach to the community-centered club of SMAC and contributes to employee dissatisfaction. You may remember me, I did send the board of trustees an email about protecting, about protecting workers who work outside, such as lifeguards and deck supervisors with N95 masks during heavy smoke days during the wildfires. I was told it was not Exos's policy to provide that. In fact, everyone was told they have to wear gray cotton masks provided by SMAC. While these are helpful to prevent the spread of COVID, they do nothing to keep the smoke out of the lungs of the workers. And this is supposedly a health and wellness company. In the meantime, everyone in the managers' offices had air filters. When I would not like to keep quiet regarding this issue, I was told, I was, when I kept trying to promote getting N95 masks for people working outside, I was told I was not a team player. Believe me, I know what a team player is. I've been on teams my whole life. A team player is one who lifts up all of the players/employees and treats them all as equally important. Exos does not do this. Apparently, if you ask, if you question management, you are not considered a team player. I'm not putting myself in the same realm as Dr. Fauci, but as you will recall, he was told he was not a team player as well for very similar reasons. Another example is when the membership team had a question about the leads we were acquiring throughout the lockdowns. We had questions, posing those to our management, but we won't, we didn't receive an answer. We tried again and still no response to our particular question. Finally, Diana told us to do what management asks, that we shouldn't need more of an explanation than that. That's not good enough for me. I repeatedly asked the questions and finally received an answer that satisfied the membership team. But why does it have to be so difficult? Communication is all that we ask for. At the first opportunity after these situations occurred, both of my positions were terminated without any attempt to mediate the situation I was in. On top of the dismissal, I was told I cannot return to the club in any capacity for six months. I was a member before I was an employee. Why these additional restrictions? I am a tax-paying person in this community. This is Exos ways of punishing employees, just one of them, and intimidating employees. Everyone who works at SMAC knows what happened to me and why. Exos and Diana Thomas have incredible reach in their health and wellness community, and I've heard that they have used it before to hinder further employment. Fortunately, I am not looking for another job in this arena. I believe that Exos is being recommended to extend their contract, not because they are best for the San Mateo Athletic Club. It's in big part due to the relationship with Tom Bauer and Diana Thomas. I would hope that the board looks closer at what is not being compared. Employee satisfaction and retention for one. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Thomas.
Unmute myself. Can you hear me?
We can, Diana.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and Karen, thank you for your service to the district. And Dave Mandelker, also, you'll both be missed. Dave, obviously, is a swimmer, you know, in the master's programs, and your wife's supporting the program, and Karen just always being there in a supportive fashion will really miss your leadership. I wanted to speak to a couple of quick things, and I'll make it fast because I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. But I wanted to correct a couple of pieces of misinformation. There was some information shared at the last board meeting that we had an 80% turnover rate. I think that was interpreted incorrectly. We do have a high turnover rate in seasonal positions within the aquatics department. The overall turnover rate for the staff at San Mateo Athletic Club is averaging about 35%. Total turnover for full-time staff is 28, part-time staff is 51. 19% of those are terms for either no-shows or there's no work for them in a 90-day period. A lot of that has to do with lessons. The average turnover is 32%. Aquatics department is a little bit higher, and that's a seasonal turnover, because a lot of those individuals come on board for certain programs. So the total turnover for that department on an annual basis, and we did have a management problem with the department that was corrected, was 78%. 22% of those individuals were no-pay or individuals that didn't have opportunities for 90 days because we didn't have lessons. The average turnover in that department for that particular calendar year was 50%. With respect to safety policies, et cetera, we would like to point out, and I think Tom Bauer forwarded, that a lot of the challenges that are employed for our staff exceeded those of the district, including the HEPA air filters that were placed in all areas, not just in management offices. Of course, they were not placed outside. Once the HEPA filter was requested in the travel trailer, I bought a travel trailer onto campus, loaned it to the campus for the staff to work from so that they were protected from the weather, that little silver thing you see out there. Once that was requested of us to put a HEPA filter in there, we immediately ordered one and got that. With respect to the N95 masks, no, we do not provide the N95 mask. We provide the PPE that is recommended for COVID. When the air quality gets to a certain level, we stop instruction and we also close. Individuals have refused to wear an N95 mask. Individuals that choose to wear an N95 mask may do so. They just have to bring that N95 mask to the general manager's attention for review to make sure that that N95 mask is acceptable and doesn't have bouts. So it's not just to provide any N95 mask, it's wanting to review that N95 mask. With respect to some of the concerns that Ms. Jones has brought up, our HR department reached out repeatedly but did not receive contact back from Ms. Jones to address some of what she felt were her concerns. Frank has brought up some stuff that is definitely important. And I guess where I'm a little confused is the ad hoc board that Nancy described, that Frank also sat in on. In a number of those meetings, he stated repeatedly that he was 95 or 96% happy with the job that Exos has been doing. I would like to point out that part of what we're talking about is a portion of individuals that swim with us that we feel that we have really tried to accommodate and, and set opportunities up that are above and beyond the one person per lane. We have over 24 masters practices a week. We're coordinating to put people in lanes. We're coordinating to increase the children's program and do it all during a pandemic. And we honestly thought and think that we're trying to service those individuals to the best of our ability. I know that there was some math being explained in regards to the competitor. Yes, the monthly fee is lower, but there were some costs that were also assessed that were not part of their management fee. There were software costs. They have a per-head cost, I believe, on employees that they charge to process payroll. And when the apples-and-apples comparison were done with some of those costs, we were aligned. With respect to any type of an incentive operation, that would relate to NOI, net operating income. So part of the responsibility we would have is to partner with you to agree upon a budget and not be rewarded based upon the weather. Compensated for our ability to manage the expenses. You know, the incentives that are built into this contract are basically our opportunity to make money, and the management fees support our costs to run the facility. I'm not sure if I addressed all of the questions that came up. I was, I wasn't prepared to speak this evening, but I felt compelled to at least clear the record and let you know that Exos has an open-door policy, and some of the allegations that have been voiced have not bubbled up to our HR team at all. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I understand that this is a specific subject. We have been your partners for 10 years. We want what's best for the members. And if it means we have to talk a little bit more about some of these details to bring that to fruition, to keep the members happy, to avoid unnecessary trauma that's already been incurred upon our populations and our staff as a result of COVID, of course, we'll have those conversations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Frank, I know you have your hand raised again, but I really don't want to get into a debate with Diana. She seemed to have addressed things that you have said. You've had your opportunity to speak. So I would like to close this down for a public comment right now, if you don't mind. And we will go back to board members. Trustee Neris? You're muted, dear.
Yes. I again would like to restate the fact that I think this is an important matter that should be able to be resolved because some of the concerns that have been raised by trustees, I think, are very manageable and many doable as far as that goes. I, I also appreciate the concerns and everything that I've heard from the people that have spoken from the public. But I also recognize the fact that there are over 6,000 members to this club. And I'm not seeing thousands and thousands of people coming here and bashing the management company. And I haven't seen that in the time going forward up to this point either. So I'm listening to everything, and I'm trying to put a balance in it and figure out what is the best direction that we should go for the majority of the people that are there, taking into account best practices that we will demand of anyone that manages this club, and to go forward. And I would like this to be done by this board, which has the most knowledge of this situation. And for that reason, I, I would like to see a special meeting in a week and give the administration and the board members who have concerns to pass it on to the administration and give them an opportunity to work out a contract and make it acceptable to this board. I think we owe it to the members that are not speaking here tonight because I don't think that they have necessarily a huge problem. And I think that we do owe it to the vendor at this point because they've been with us successfully for 10 years and have shown us some loyalty. And we also went through a process that we established where we had a committee that vetted the people that made the, the, the offers. And I respect their work. So I'd like to see this back in a week, and I'd like to see a contract brought before the board at that time that would address these issues, or if we can't, then, you know, we have to decide accordingly.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver?
So I appreciate the comments from members of the public. And I'm not going to comment on allegations because that's, you know, that's what they are. They may be worth looking into, but that's not what I'm here to talk about. But I do share the, the dissatisfaction with the data we were presented at the last board meeting where, you know, we didn't even see the cost comparisons ahead of time. And I do think there are questions about those cost comparisons and the accuracy of them. So I will be voting no. And if the motion to approve this contract fails, then I think it would be appropriate for the board immediately to discuss our options, like, you know, in the next few minutes. And I would propose that we instruct our staff to enter into negotiations with the other bidder, Power Fitness, if that's the name, I'm not sure if that's the correct name, and perhaps work with the subcommittee of continuing board members to, to iron out some of these specific points that I think are now being raised for the first time. For me, one is this advisory committee that I was actually quite surprised to learn was already being selected without, you know, any, any real board discussion beyond just the general idea, you know, maybe having an advisory committee is a good thing, that they're already being selected by our executives. And, you know, that to me is like putting the cart way, way before the horse because the board has not even considered how that selection should occur. So I think that there, there are some secondary considerations that work their way into this contract that I think the board may want to spend some time tonight discussing. But the first thing I would suggest is we vote this down, then instruct staff to work with the other bidder. And I would recommend they do it with continuing board members to bring back something, maybe at a special meeting, but, you know, as soon as possible so we can keep going forward, continue the operation of the facility. That would be my suggestion.
And trustee Neris?
Madam Chairman, I, I'm prepared to withdraw my motion to approve this contract tonight. And if the second would do the same, I would withdraw the, the motion at this particular time. And again, restate the fact that I would like the motion to be brought back at another meeting after an opportunity to address the concerns that were raised tonight with the vendor.
I was the one who seconded the motion. The problem I'm having is that the previous meeting, the board, by a three-to-two vote, approved to accept the recommendation of Exos. And the difference that we made was instead of having a three-year contract extension, having a one-year contract. And that's what this discussion tonight was supposed to be about. I heavily object to the fact to lay this on the new board because I think we have ourselves talked it almost to death. And it's just a very disappointing conversation. Hearing from the public, I have to say, it's interesting to me that they now refer themselves as "we", and that's a good thing because I think they feel part of the process. Richard, I don't know about advisory committees. I thought those were all developed at the college or at the department. I've never had the board involved in how we've put together an advisory committee, but that's something maybe we need to talk about. I just find this whole conversation, I will say, number one, is very disappointing to me that we've gotten so far off track of what we were supposed to be doing tonight. And if you withdraw the motion, I guess it's dead because I'm the second motion.
May I just say, may I just say that I agree with you. We did votes to move forward with this vendor and directed the administration to prepare a contract to bring to us for our approval. And so we're talking tonight about the approval of a contract. And from what I'm hearing, there are board members that have some specific concerns that haven't been addressed yet. So I would like the administration and the vendor to have an opportunity to continue to work on that contract and bring it back for approval. Also, being mindful of the fact that we did vote three-to-two to move forward with this vendor. So that's the only reason I'm withdrawing it, to give us an opportunity to address some of the concerns raised by community and the board, and then bring it back again, addressing those concerns.
Okay. Chancellor, I think you wanted to intercede on something.
I, I don't, I don't know if I, you know, with regard to an advisory committee, that is a participatory governance matter. And it's, it's important that we draw a line between policy and execution of policy. And so I just wanted to comment on that, and I'm going to put my accreditation hat on, frankly, that it's really important that there's a bright line with an elected board between policy and operation. So my, if you read my email response, I actually want to involve the college in that process of selecting an advisory committee. Reach out to the academic senate, reach out to the classified senate because ultimately, if, you know, regardless, this is a shared facility, and the college needs a voice in that process. And that's, we would put this advisory committee together like we do any other advisory committee with respect to auxiliary services or any other significant operation. So I, I just feel like I needed to state that. This is no different than, and it shouldn't be treated any differently than any other entity we work with.
Very good. Thank you for that. Is there, is, can, can this come, I guess, Bauer, I'm looking at you, I guess, and the chancellor, can this come back in a short amount of time with some answers to some of the questions the board had originally about the contract? Stay in those parameters because that's where we're supposed to be right now?
So if, if I can speak, if I'm understanding correctly what I've heard, there's a request that we have some language in the contract that speaks to a shutdown clause and, and how we deal with that, and that there is some concern about the net promoter score and that we should go back and, and look at what the incentive makeup looks like. So those were the two things I heard with, with regard to employee concerns and, and how Exos deals with employee concerns. I, I, again, I'm not a contract expert. I'll defer to Yanelli on, on how that's codified in a contract. So, so I don't know what to say about that, but those are the two things that, that I've kind of taken away from this. I, I hope I'm right. And, you know, I can certainly come back and, and sit with Exos team, and Yanelli and I can see if we can bring something back that addresses those items.
Trustee Oliver?
So I, I just feel it's necessary for me as an elected official to dispute the notion that because there was a three-to-vote to instruct staff to work on a contract with Exos, that we are not free to vote that down and now go in a different direction. And that is my recommendation, is that we go in a different direction. And I don't know what the sentiments of other trustees are, but I don't think we are at a point in our discussion as a board where what we're saying is go back and iron out these points. That's certainly not where I'm coming from. I'm saying start new with a new, a new bidder. And since we have a short window, I do believe board input, which can occur tonight or soon after tonight, would help with the ironing out of those details with the different bidder. But I don't believe we are anywhere near the point of saying we're instructing staff to work through what the incentive numbers are or, you know, what the shutdown numbers are, et cetera. That's not, I, I don't, I mean, I'd like to hear from others trustees, but I don't think that's where we are. And I think the interpretation that that's where we are, I just don't agree with it.
I, I agree with you. And I think if trustee Neris and President Swartz withdrew their motion, if you're making a motion, I would second your motion. That's where I stand.
So you have another motion on the floor. Would you like to repeat that, please?
Sure. Okay, I will make a motion that we instruct staff to negotiate. And I want to make sure I have the name correctly. Is it Power Wellness? I believe it's Power Wellness, but the other, the other bidder. And bring back a one-year contract. But, and in addition, we need to discuss, I would think, either tonight or very shortly, a few of the parameters that should be in that contract, which were raised tonight in reviewing the Exos-proposed contract.
Madam, Madam President, a point of order. I don't know that we are in a position to make that and accept that offer, that motion tonight and have it heard because it's a motion basically then to grant a specific contract to a specific vendor. And that is not on our agenda tonight. It has not been agendized. It has not been put out to the public. And the public has not had an opportunity then to hear it in an open meeting. So that would need to be agendized, and it would need to be something that is put out for everyone to hear and to be able to speak to offering a contract to a completely different vendor. So I, I question the appropriateness of that motion.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree with you. I think voting down the motion that's on the floor, the recommendation, is one thing. And then if you want to have some current dialogue about under-board member comments, what to bring back, something back later. I would think that would be the route, the appropriate route to go. Certainly. Vice Chancellor Bauer, yes?
The, the only thing I'm going to say is I'm going to defer to Yanelli Polito about if that's possible or not. Because again, I'm not, I'm not a procurement expert, so I have no idea. But I will, I will ask that we defer to Yanelli about what can and what can't be done in that realm.
If this is, if this, if this is voted down, then having future discussion?
Well, going directly to Power Wellness after the, the group that evaluated the two vendors made one recommendation. I don't know what the, the appropriate course of action is.
Well, I can, I can.
So again, I'm.
I think that all of us that have served on boards long enough know that this came on an agenda to give a contract to Exos. And that is what was discussed, and we voted on. Now, if we want to change that and offer it to someone else, I, I think, I, I think that we all know well enough that that needs to be agendized because it's a specific action, it's a specific contract. And I, I don't think we can go in any other direction other than having it on an agendized, on an agendized meeting with the public, having an opportunity to come and express themselves. And I, again, withdraw my prior motion.
And if you do that, I think if what trustee Oliver is asking, not necessarily executing an agreement or even approving a contract, is actually just giving direction. And I think I'm changing it to that. If the, if the majority of the board wants to give direction for Vice Chancellor Bauer and Ms. Polito to begin preliminary discussions on bringing back this matter for a contract approval at a future date would be the direction.
Bringing back the contract with whom?
With either party, but if, if trustee Oliver is asking, from, from what I'm hearing and listening to you as well, while we can't execute a contract or an agreement with. while we can't execute a contract or an agreement with this other party, we can give, the majority of board can give direction to have discussions, preliminary discussions to work with this other body or this other organization to prepare to bring back an agreement for board approval at a future date.
And are you suggesting that staff also continue to work with?
I'm not making any suggestions. I'm just saying if, if I'm massaging the motion to make it agreeable so that we're not a file of the Brown Act, that we are in fact just saying, hey, we're if we could massage the
I, I think in general, when we give direction to staff, it's not in the form of a motion.
Right. That's what I said. So if we can just say, hey, the majority of the board wants this, and then we go from there. And I think if that's what we're going with, if we have the majority, and at, at this point, we have two. So we're not sure if we even have a majority.
I, I think anything that is an action item, which a motion would be, needs to be agendized, needs to be brought before the public in advance and so forth, which we have not done. So there cannot be a motion for this. So I am in support of trustee Nurus withdrawing his motion for this one, and, and we are not taking further action on the, on the proposed one-year amendment. And I think then it is up to the board to provide direction of, of what to do next.
Right. And I think trustee Hollibur had a suggestion on what you should do next. And so that's
If, if I, if I may, then rather than a motion to negotiate with the other vendor, maybe just to be safe, we should agendize for a special meeting at the earliest possible convenience, which I imagine could be as early as Monday, to have this as a special meeting item. Get public input. And then we can act on it. So it would be a action item. We would hear from the public. We're not doing anything other than agendizing it. And I'd suggest we can do it Monday.
So basically, we'll be carrying this over to Monday for further discussion.
On a recommendation that we instruct staff to negotiate a contract with Power Wellness and get all the public input. And if then the board votes to do that, we will expect that to be done quickly, to be brought back, if possible, to this board. I agree, it makes sense to bring it back to this board before the new board is sworn in.
That's assuming that everybody on this board will be available. We'd have to find out the availability of everybody on the board. We can just assume everybody's available Monday at a certain time. It may not be. I, I just think this, well, so here we are. So it's, 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 the motion has been withdrawn, so that item is off the agenda. And I, I guess what I'm saying, hearing is that the staff will poll the board to see if they're available for a future meeting and call the attorney, because I think we're going to have some lawsuits thrown at us. That's beside the point.
If I, if I may, and certainly I hear, I hear clearly from the majority of the board, so I, I understand. I'm not here to debate. That's not my role. But I, I don't know whether it's a question that I need to ask of Yanelli or, or counsel, but we did have a duly appointed committee that, that took a hard look at, at both proposals. One was about 500 pages, the other was 200 pages. So I'm a little nervous, frankly, that, you know, we have a, a group that did its due diligence. We can talk about the contract not being quite right, but in terms of the right best value, you did have a, a group of staff that were independent of this process with that knowledge. I don't know whether it's helpful or appropriate, Yanelli, to send those proposals to the board so they have a, a, a better handle on, you know, the, the details. I know that I, I trust that this staff made an independent best recommendation. But I also understand it is a board decision and I respectfully understand that. But, you know, we had staff that had access to information that maybe the board didn't. So I guess what I'm saying is I'm concerned that it's automatically over to the other vendor without a, a, a hard look at that particular proposal. So I don't know what the process is. I'm just asking.
Like this point, well, may I just comment? At our last board meeting, we, we asked and were told by our county council that we were free to go with either of the bidders. So once we were provided that information, it became purely a policy decision of the board. My guess, which is just a guess, is that it continues to be a policy decision of the board since we did have two qualified bidders. It was not a lowest bid contract.
Right.
Okay, okay. Thank you, trustee Hollibur.
I, I would suggest, though, in the balance of caution, Chancellor Claire, that, you know, we do need to check with legal counsel and find out what, you know, make sure that what we're doing is in compliance with the law and procurement processes, et cetera, et cetera, so that we don't make any missteps that could be avoided.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll do that and we'll pull the board for your direction for a meeting next week.
Okay, so we're going, we're moving on. Two dash eleven one oh, two dash eleven one oh two B, modification of board meeting schedule for December 2020 meeting. Date and setting organizational meeting date. I need a motion and a second to discuss. As the staff report details, it is necessary to adjust the date of the December 2020 meeting to accommodate the transition in office of outgoing and incoming trustees. Staff have polled the incoming trustees of their availability to meet on Monday, December 14th and Tuesday, December 15th. I will ask that the three remaining board members of their preference for the adjusting the meeting date. That would be trustee Goodman, Nurus, and Hollibur. Do you have a preference for Monday, the 14th or Tuesday, the 15th?
No.
Then I'll talk at once. What?
No preference.
No preference?
Monday?
Monday, the 14th? Nurus?
Can we check with the, obviously not now, but if we
Yes, they will, they will check with the new trustees and see that they work out, of course.
Actually, we have, and I think they're both available. Mitch, I misunderstood your question before. I'm sorry, trustee Goodman. Yes, both, both the trustees elects are, are available on either of those dates. Sorry about that. I misunderstood Mitch's text message before. So we're good.
Trustee Nurus, are you available for Monday, the 14th? Or do you have a preference? You're okay? Okay. So that looks like Monday, the 14th will be your reorganization meeting. Two eleven one oh three B, adoption of resolution honoring state Senator Jerry Hill. Motion in a second for discussion.
So move.
Any public comments? Any board comments? He's been a great, he's been a great assemblyman and, or senator. Worked for on behalf of this district. You're very fortunate to have our state, state senators and assembly people so positive. That would be my discussion item. So I need a call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Motion passes. Two eleven one oh four B, adoption of resolution number twenty dash nineteen, congratulating Jefferson Union High School District Superintendent Dr. Terry Deloria on her retirement. Motion in a second to discuss the resolution. Thank you. Thank you. Any public comments?
I too would speak to the fact that Superintendent Deloria has done an excellent job at the district in her short tenure there. And that the north end of the county received a great benefit from her services.
Very good. Any other comments? Call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Information reports twenty dash eleven two C, update on workforce development task force response to COVID-19 impact. Chancellor Claire will introduce the report. And members of the workforce development task force will make the presentation.
Thank you, President Schwartz. And it's my pleasure to introduce this report. You know, I, I've communicated to the board in the past that we really wanted to keep the board updated, not only on what we're doing for our students, and we've had a, a few conversations about that and, and the supports that we're doing our best to provide for students during this time. But also, the other, another element is what are we doing in terms of workforce, supporting workforce development, dislocated workers, small businesses, basically San Mateo County in general. You know, we, we really do want to live up to our here-for-you tagline. And then our, the last in this series, I guess it'll probably be after the first two years, what are we, what have we done for the community? And it, it's my pleasure to introduce this team. I can tell you as a former dean of career and technical education, it was called Vote Ed back in my day. A very simple idea, if you are simultaneously dialed into the needs of employers and simultaneous, simultaneously dialed into the needs of students, you would have programs that would do quite well. And one of the things you'll hear tonight that I really want to, if, if you hear one thing from me tonight about this, I want to emphasize the word collaboration and coordination, because we have multiple mechanisms to deliver needs, workforce training needs to the public. And our, our focus was on getting people, getting people to workforce training, development opportunities as quickly as possible, regardless of the mechanism used. And, and you'll, you'll hear from folks across the spectrum, across the three colleges of how they've come together to do that. So with that, I'm not quite sure who I'm turning it over to, but I'm going to turn it over to this team that did such great work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike. This is Jonathan Bissel. If I could ask Mitch that Alex Kramer be given the opportunity to share his screen, and then I'll begin.
He has access.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm so sorry. I don't see the option here to share screen.
Brian, can you promote Alex to panelists?
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Alex. Good evening, members of the board, chancellor, colleagues, and members of the community. On behalf of the workforce development task force, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share this presentation about the task force and our response to the impact of COVID-19. The task force was formed by the chancellor's, thank you, Alex. The task force was formed by the chancellor's cabinet in May, 2020 to serve residents, small businesses, entrepreneurs, and organizations impacted by COVID-19. The task force is comprised of three workforce deans and directors. Julian Branch at Kenyatta College, Andrea Visner at Skyline College, and Alex Kramer at CSM, as well as the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center Director, Sayeda Stroud at Skyline College, two CTE deans, that's Heidi Diamond at CSM and Michael Kane at Skyline, a vice president of instruction, Dr. Tammy Robinson at Kenyatta College, and myself as the executive director of community continuing corporate education. This incredibly collaborative team has united to advance a district-wide mission. Informed by the expertise of its members in workforce and CTE, small business development and entrepreneurship and training. I'd like to now turn it over to my colleague, Alex Kramer, to share about the need for this work.
All right. Thanks so much, Jonathan. So over the next three slides, we'll cover some data that reflects the true impact that the COVID-19 pandemic has had on our local and statewide economies. First, we'll review the immediate impact of job losses that initiated the formation of this task force. Next, we'll review industries that experienced the highest numbers of jobs lost. And finally, we'll review who has been hit the hardest across the state. So let's dive in. This first slide shows the local impact in regard to jobs lost across the Bay Area as a result of shelter-in-place orders in response to the pandemic. Moving from left to right, we can see that San Mateo County experienced losses of close to 170,000 jobs. In total, the entire Bay Area lost more than half a million jobs in the matter of about a month. As reflected in the five-year job trend chart in the middle of this slide, we see a very steep decline in the number of total jobs, which is reflected in millions across the Bay Area. Finally, the third chart on this, on this slide visualizes Bay Area unemployment rates leading up to shelter, the shelter-in-place orders across the state. For reference, in January 2020, San Mateo County had one of the lowest unemployment rates at approximately 2%. As of today, our county is, is at approximately 7% unemployment. So this next slide reflects the total losses by industry across the state. Please note that when looking at this slide, the dotted line reflects the peak job losses that were reflected at the start of the pandemic. And the solid orange reflects the number of jobs still left unfilled as of August. This, it's no surprise when looking at this chart that the leisure and hospitality industry was the hardest hit in California, with statewide losses nearing 1 million jobs. As of August, more than 650,000 jobs across the state still remain unfilled. This final slide that I'll cover reflects statewide unemployment rates broken down by race. Again, just as our previous slide showed, the dotted line portrays the peak unemployment rate experienced since February, while the solid orange bar reflects unemployment rates as of August. In looking at this chart, it is evidence, evident that Californians of color experienced the highest rates of unemployment overall. And while each demographic here experienced a decrease of approximately 5% after reaching peak unemployment, it's important to note that Black Californians have been greatly impacted and as of August, still remain within 1% of peak unemployment reached. Again, this data, while difficult to digest, reflects the true impact that this pandemic has had on our, on Californians and our local community. I'll now pass things off to Andrea Visner, dean of strategic partnerships and workforce development at Skyline College, to review this team's response strategies to serve displaced workers during this critical time.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Alex, for setting this stage with data. Given the incredible need, we understood the importance of immediate action and building visibility within our communities and how we are here to serve. The task force developed a comprehensive marketing campaign that reached over 280,000 households and to date has led to the direct engagement of over 500 community members for a variety of services. The campaign focused on four response strategies that were designed to address the critical needs of our communities as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide, please. The first response strategy focuses on job loss and addresses the overwhelming impact the pandemic has had on our local community. We have developed 14 low-cost, short-term training programs designed to support workers seeking to re-enter the workforce, upscale, upscale to obtain a new position or earn a college-issued certificate or degree. Programs can be completed in as little as one to six months and include credit and not-for-credit offerings. Valuable partnerships have been developed with employers, adult education, and county and citywide agencies to lever, leverage funds, talent, and design curriculum. Training integrates, customize onboarding, I-Best teaching practices, tutoring support, and connections to employment. Dynamic training programs prepare individuals for the careers in UX design, facilities maintenance, cybersecurity, human resources, and others. Next slide. The second response strategy includes our focus on small business recovery and the direct support we can offer to small businesses and entrepreneurs as they reimagine services to remain relevant and profitable during the pandemic. The Bay Area Entrepreneur Center at Skyline College leads this response effort and offers tools and resources to assist local businesses. You will have an opportunity to learn more about this later in the presentation. Next slide. The third response strategy addresses the changing workplace, connecting businesses to customized training options that support the development of teams as they navigate changes as a result of the pandemic. Community continuing and corporate education offers low-cost, flexible, and responsive training in areas such as remote, remote working strategies, change management, and cultivating inclusive and equitable practices in the workplace, to name a few. Next slide. The final response strategy focuses on career readiness and job placement. Students and community members can access direct support across the three colleges for needs that pertain to preparing Students and community members can access direct support across the three colleges for needs that pertain to preparing and interviewing for open jobs and paid internships. Direct outreach and vetting of employer partners ensure that we, that the companies have open jobs, pay livable wages, offer safe and healthy work environments, and support anti-racist workplace cultures. This work has led to community members landing jobs with Tesla, Slack, the Accelerator Lab, Makaki Chiropractic Center, Amazon, and others. Next slide. In an effort to provide a central engagement tool, the Workforce Connections website portal, otherwise known as the portal, has been created to share details with our community specific to our response strategies. Job seekers, small businesses, entrepreneurs, and employers can access training information, valuable resources, and request information. Now I'll turn your attention to my colleague Saida Stroud, where she'll begin to highlight the impact of our work.
Thank you, Andrea. Hello, everyone. Good evening. In light of the strategies we've put in place, we're now going to take a moment to highlight the various areas of impact that this task force has had on our community since our coming together over the summer. The first area is small business. Through our partnership over the last few months and with the efforts on the ground, the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center of Skyline College has been able to serve and assist over 500 small businesses throughout the county. We've developed and launched the Small Business Recovery and Assistance Program, providing business recovery support directly to our small businesses. It's funded by the San Bruno Community Foundation and supported, of course, by Skyline College. The Task Force partnership has allowed this program to flourish. From the countywide marketing campaign that was extremely successful to actual dollars for program support, this team and the district's support of this work has ensured that we're able to have broader reach and access to the resources that our small businesses so desperately need at this time. This work is supported by our district-wide partnership and through partnerships with several other local organizations and government agencies, such as the City of San Bruno Renaissance Center and the San Mateo County Economic Development Association. With this level of collaboration, we are better positioned to support our local businesses. Next, I'd like to share a quote from a local business owner, Monica Suarez of Balanced Life and Nourished Body, a small business located in San Bruno. Monica says, "My experience with the B A E C has been very helpful. I've learned so many things from the experts. This is a tremendous service that B A E C provides the community. I am greatly appreciative." Next, Julian Branch will discuss the impact that we've had in the areas of our training programs.
Hello. Water's critical is a critical component in our society and a great career path for students to advance their dreams. We all drink it. In the past, for students to enter the field, they would need to find an internship, usually not paid, or find an apprenticeship. We started to work with Cal Water as well as San Francisco Power Water and Sewer and began to understand their employment needs. There would be a large shift in the workforce from retirements, and the companies want to partner with us to to find ways to lower the barriers for future employees. We realized we could create a three-month short-term certificate program that prepares students for the water treatment and water distribution licenses, commonly known as T2 and D2. This is made possible through the Department of Continuing and Executive Education to establish a non-for-credit program housing these two certifications. Additionally, the program was endorsed by the California Water Board. The full class was then sponsored by Cal Water, which allowed us to charge $0 and provide free textbooks to the students. Each book would have cost around $300. With the program's success, we'll be running a second cohort in the spring. Additionally, we are now in the process of gaining faculty support to establish an academic certificate program to be offered among the excellent career education programs at Kenyatta College. Next slide. Here's a quote from Ron Webb, Vice President of Human Resources at Cal Water. "We are pleased to partner with Kenyatta College to help make this program feasible for those who will be part of our future, for the future workforce." Next, I want to turn it over to my colleague Andrea Visner, who will talk about child development education.
Thank you, Julian, for sharing details regarding the water distribution program. The teacher shortage continues to be a challenge that faces the Bay Area due to the cost of living and pay disparities in this field. As a result of the pandemic and the shift to online learning, it provided an opportunity to accelerate, to accelerate training for community members for jobs in the child development sector while promoting advanced pathways in education. At Skyline College, we worked closely with South San Francisco Adult School to design a for-credit program that prepares participants for two levels of the California teacher permit. And we have already received incredible feedback from students regarding the impact of the program design on the success in their classes. The model integrates iBest practices, where Skyline College faculty work with an adult education ESL teacher to design and develop lesson plans and teach courses in ways that support language acquisition along with key learning outcomes of each class. Our work is designed to increase representation of diverse professionals in all levels of education careers and has cut the time in half to earn permits. We are working closely with major employers to be able to provide direct connections to employment. With many offering tuition reimbursement as a benefit, it will greatly support students as they continue to grow in their roles and advance in their education. Next slide, please. We have a quote from Stephen Redman, the principal of South San Francisco Adult School. "Skyline College continues to be a leader in workforce training. During the complexities of the pandemic, we needed to work differently with our partners. It has been very exciting to see our teachers working together in service of students. We have received lots of great feedback from students in the Child Development Education Program." I'd like to now turn it back to Alex Kramer, where he will discuss the Amazon Web Services program. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. So CSM is excited about the launch of our new not-for-credit Amazon Web Services cloud computing program that we're offering in partnership with community continuing and corporate education. In fact, our first class in this 10-week program kicked off tonight at 6:00 PM with more than 20 participants enrolled. Based on this demand and feedback from our CIS advisory board, CSM faculty are now moving forward with implementing this program as a for-credit offering at the college. With that said, over the past few years, cloud computing skills have been identified as one of the top skills demanded by employers across all industries, which is really what prompted us to offer this program to the community. As a certified AWS Academy, CSM is using an industry-informed curriculum that teaches the most recent trends in this field. We've also designed this program to serve the needs of all community members by developing additional labs to complement the curriculum in order to support those without a technical background. Participants that complete this program will be prepared to earn their AWS Cloud Practitioner Certification, which is a foundational, industry-recognized certification that will give our participants a competitive edge when re-entering the workforce. Career opportunities for those that earn this certification include technical customer service associate and technical sales account executive roles, as well as business analyst and project manager roles. In this next slide, I'm going to read a, I'm sorry, I'm going to read a quote from one of our program participants, Andrei Volovic, and Andrei unfortunately lost his position due to the pandemic, and this is his quote. "While going through the rigorous process of finding a new job, I noticed that many organizations today need people with cloud skills to help transform their business. I'm hoping this AWS class will help me build my cloud skills that will enable me to innovate and build my future career. I'm excited about this learning opportunity and pleased that San Mateo Community College offers such an essential class." So with that, I'm happy to pass things back to Saida to conclude our presentation tonight.
Thank you, Alex. So tonight, you've heard about our response strategies to all of the, the issues and challenges that our communities face with this pandemic, and you've really heard and seen firsthand the impact that this work is having on members of our community. So on behalf of the task force team and all the areas we represent, I want to thank you all for allowing us this time to share a little bit of what we've been up to and to hear from us and hear the impact that this work has had on all the different areas of our community and on their ability to navigate this ever-changing environment. We're happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. It was an excellent report. Do we have any questions or comments from board members? They can find you people. Where are you, trustee Mandelker?
Yes, thank you for an excellent report, and I'm really happy to see the broad variety of different offerings that are being put together. This is very reminiscent of how this district responded after the terrorist attacks of 9/11, 2001, with preparing this, workers who had been let go at the San Francisco Airport and related firms and retraining them in the biotech manufacturing engineering area, which was a quite a successful program and also led to ongoing academic programs as well in our district. So I think this is, you know, going in the same footsteps and pursuing that same path. The only question I would have is, what additional resources, financial resources would be helpful? Are there things that we could do, more help that we could provide to students, more students that we could enroll? Could we make it more possible for more students to be successful if we applied more financial resources to these programs? Because I think that's something that this board and the incoming board, I'm guessing, would be interested in helping to see what we can do with the, with the financial resources that we have as a district to try and help as many students as possible achieve success through these programs.
So I'd like to- I mean, I'll answer once. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Actually, I wanted to invite Chancellor Claire, or perhaps Andrea, or Tammy Robinson to address the question.
Okay. I think one element is of it is marketing. Is that right? Sort of our outreach efforts. And I don't know if anybody wants to talk about that, but we've, we definitely took a, you know, a very hard look at how best to spend our marketing dollars. And I think it paid off. I forget what our reach was, but it was pretty impressive in terms of not only the social media that, you know, you can geo-fence and target, but also mailers, that just the old-fashioned way, mailers that went out to homes because people are home now. But I don't know, I don't know if someone wants, besides me, wants to add to that.
Chancellor Claire, it's Andrea. I can add if you like. Thank you for the question, trustee Mandelker. It's a great one. At the moment, many of the services and the opportunities that are afforded to our community are funded through categorical dollars. And so as you know, with state budgets and flux, categoricals are going to potentially change moving forward. So I think our immediate ask is really just to kind of, you know, keep a pulse with us to see what the impact of categoricals will be moving forward. For this particular round of efforts, we've been able to utilize strong workforce dollars to pay for most of the expenses. We've used leveraging with partnerships with major companies to fund some scholarships and things like that. So I think for now, it's just about really having a pulse check on what and how we might be affected moving forward with categoricals. And then we can make a much more informed comment about it.
So if I could just follow up for just a second on that. And so one of my concerns is that we are trying very hard to help people who have lost their jobs due to the pandemic get retrained and retooled and up to speed for new jobs. I am concerned that in this, you know, still high-cost county to live in, that they may not have the staying power to see it through some of these, you know, whether it's a 48-week or even a 10-week program. Are there things that we need to do, much as we supported our students in pre-COVID days around transportation, food, housing? Are there other things that we can do to help support these students and their families, bridge the gaps that they can stay in these programs through to actually gaining employment in these new fields and be able to support themselves and their families? So I would urge us to take a look at that as well, to see if there are things that we can do to make sure that students are able to stay enrolled in these programs all the way through to completion and attainment of a new job.
Thank you. That's a great recommendation. I think, you know, we have a lot of different ideas as a task force, and we'd be happy to come back with some recommendations. As Andrea said, we're keeping a pulse on what's happening. I'd love to track with the board on that, and certainly are keeping our eyes open for new opportunities to serve the community that may require additional support.
So, said it, Jonathan?
President Schwartz, President Schwartz. It looks like actually trustee-elect has, Pimentel has a question. He's put in the Q and A. So do you want me to try to read that and see if we can answer that? That be okay? Or first of all, do other trustees have questions? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, go ahead.
He's not sworn in yet, so the trustees actually get to ask the questions first. Let me, let me read this back. Trust, trustee-elect Pimentel says, "This is great work. The CTE team is to be highly commended for getting this done. It is exactly what community colleges can and should do." Here are his questions. Question one, how many total students went through these programs or are currently enrolled in aggregate? And I'll, I'll stop there before I read the rest off. Can, can, can we get a ballpark figure on that?
This is Julian Branch at Kenyatta College. I would say across, there are probably seven programs that are new at the institution. We probably serve over 200 students for all the different programs that we offer. And so that includes academic, the new certificate programs, as well as some not-for-credit offerings.
Okay, okay. Anybody else want to, anybody want to else add to that? And trustee-elect Pimentel, we can actually, we can get the data and send it to the board and to you as well and to others. Any other, any ball, any other ballpark figures that anybody wants to throw in? Or do we want to sharpen our pencils on this so we give an accurate answer? It's a shy group tonight. I'm surprised.
Jonathan, we'd be happy to give an update. You know, some of these programs are, as Alex stated, the AWS program started this evening.
Yeah.
We've been accepting registrations right up until today. Super excited to see where that one goes. And so the number will change as we go forward and we add new start dates, and we'll be happy to share that information with the board.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to ask a couple more questions here on behalf of trustee-elect Pimentel. How many, how many students, how many students, if you know, have been successfully placed in the fields for which they've been trained? That's a hard one sometimes to get.
Yeah. This is Jonathan again. I'll take the first crack at that, just to say, as you can see from the board report, many of these programs have just launched in the last few months. And so that data is something that we're anxiously awaiting and will be tracking and seeking our best to really support the students to be placed. As Andrea shared in the child development section, there is some amazing ongoing work being done there with placement. So there are things that are happening in that regard, but it's a little bit too early to give a broad answer at this point.
And in my sense, too, just to see what's going on, and this is anecdotal, is that I think it's just still really a tough job market now, but hopefully as we come out of recovery, we have people that are trained up and ready, and hopefully we can play some sooner because I know they need the help now, but at least they're positioned to take advantage of the training once the economy starts to pick up. What is the cost to the student for these programs? And water treatment was no, no cost, but what about others?
If I may, this is Alex Kramer. So the cost for the AWS program is $150, of which includes a $50 fee for the certification at the end of the program. Though we are waiving all tuition, except for the $50 fee for anyone that was impacted or had a family member that was impacted by COVID-19. So our focus was to keep this very low cost. In fact, it's more of a cost recovery model. We're not looking to make any revenue for, from offering these programs.
Okay. And last question is, what is the cost to the district to deliver these great programs?
This is Julian. I can take that.
Okay.
For the, for example, the water program probably has about a $10,000 price tag to it. Eight to $10,000, so you have to find the, to pay for the expertise to teach it, and you also have to develop the program itself. And then the water, Cal Water was nice enough to sponsor the program, which covered the cost of the textbooks. If not, that would have had to been given over to the students to pay for, and this program would have cost a lot more money.
Okay.
And I would echo that. Amazon Web Services was approximately $10,000 as well.
Okay. I think these are really good questions, perhaps what we can do, and I- I think these are really good questions. Perhaps what we can do, and I can work offline with this group or through others is sort of aggregate those, the answers to those questions across all programs. So we do get a sense of scope of impact. And we'll continue to do this. We'll do it after the, after, after the pandemic's over. I think this is a new model that has emerged again as a result of need. Much trustee Mandelkeren, to your, your point of, you know, after, you know, nine-one-one, we, we, we had to pivot very quickly. And this is another example of that. And I commend the people that are involved with this work. And I'm just so happy to see the collaboration, the cooperation across the district. It's been impressive. We've been really focused again on what do we need to meet the needs of the community in this, in this, and the, those that need this training. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Hey, anything else from board members or comments? To all of you, excellent report. Excellent work, certainly needed, and so appreciative. So thank you very much. So we're gonna move to a twenty-eleven three C. An update on the COVID nineteen planning and response, including actions relating to the athletic competition. Chancellor Claire.
Okay, it's me again. Thank you. I know we're, we're pretty close to the end of the agenda and I know tend to talk about COVID a lot. I think we owe this board the total hours we've put into planning. I know at one point when we measured, it was sixteen thousand hours that we had put into planning for COVID. And it's only gone up since then. It's been a major, major effort. I was telling the staff today that we are, I, I, we are purple proof. And what I mean by that is that as we did our planning and I appreciated the board's support on this, we really had to decouple our operations as much as possible, particularly our educational offerings, from whatever was going to happen with the pandemic. And sure enough, we all know we're experiencing unfortunately another spike. And but we're, our operations and our online, most, most of our classes are not affected. And then hopefully, as things get better, as we said, we can start planning for more students to return to campus. But we just have to flex with the environment. We don't have control over it. There are decisions that will continually be, continue to be made either at the state level or perhaps now even the federal level and certainly at the local level that we don't have control over. The purpose of tonight, I, we don't have to rehash. We've talked to you a lot about our plans and I don't plan to rehash that. But I felt like I needed to get a conversation to the board and perhaps in kind of in the spirit of direction as well about athletics. And what prompted this is that the, the California Community Colleges Athletic Association basically has not, has still left the possibility of competing in the spring semester open. And they have left that, the decision frankly, at a, at an individual district or college level. And so a number of us participated in the coast conference meeting, it was about a week ago or so. And we actually have a deadline coming up of December fifteenth, where we need to indicate whether we are interested or are able to participate in what's called Spring One. And Spring One is basically the spring semester and it's all your traditional fall sports that, that are, that we do in the fall. And then Spring Two, I believe, is winter and spring sports. We don't owe an answer on that yet. Doesn't mean we're going to participate. We don't know what we're facing in January. But for purposes of scheduling, the coast conference needs an indication of where we're at. Simultaneously, I know there's a lot of, there's always concern about all of our students and our student athletes tend to really rely not only on the competition, but really all the other support from coaches, from each other. And I know there's concerns about, well, even in the absence of competition, what are we doing for student athletes? So I'm gonna stop talking at this point. This is really hopefully a conversation with the board. But I am gonna invite, I believe we have two of our athletic directors, Andreas Wolf and Joe Morello, and then several coaches from some colleges. And I think they want to spend just a little bit of time talking to you about the considerations and the planning they've done. And I believe we also have one of our athletic trainers, if I'm not mistaken, Jasmine, if I'm not mistaken, who has been very much involved with the, the health aspects and the safety aspects of this. And there, I see Jasmine now. So Andreas and Joe, I think I'll turn it over to you. And then if you could just brief the board along with your coaches and then we can open it up for discussion and possibly some direction in terms of what our answer might be on, on December fifteenth. So I'll turn it over to you and on, to you and Joe, Andreas.
Thanks, Chancellor Claire. And before I get into our little discussion, I do want to personally thank trustee Schwartz and trustee Mandelkeren for their years of service. Trustee Schwartz, I hope I run into you in the music on the square. And trustee Mandelkeren, I always have a sideline pass for you on the gridiron. Anytime you're, you want to come down, you're more than welcome. So I also want to really thank the EOC that is providing oversight for our institutions to operate under these circumstances. Ray Hernandez, Ben Zaromink and Aaron McBean have just been rock stars. We've relied on them heavily. They have provided us with excellent guidance. And so I think we are to commend not only them, but the other folks on the EOC with allowing or with, with providing us the guidance to get back on the campus. You know, we all know that athletics is a very competitive endeavor. We, we've got three baseball programs in the district. We compete against one another, let alone some of the other sports that we have. And it's all about competition. And with all of the, the endeavors that I've been involved with for the number of years that I've been in the district and the collaboration that has occurred, I have to say that I'm probably most proud of this collaboration than any other I've been associated with. It took the three athletic directors, it took the athletic trainers, us working athletic directors, working statewide with our athletic directors association, the trainers working with their athletic trainers association, getting information from the NC two A, et cetera, putting it all together. And we, we, we did it in unison and lockstep and worked together to make sure that we were all supporting one another to get our student athletes who are experiencing a lot of pain right now back onto campus. So about mid-October, we all worked on creating a phase one. And phase one was essentially the, the opportunity to come back onto campus in a physical conditioning aspect only, no utilizing of equipment or anything like that, very controlled environment. And within that process, we, you know, we established parameters with regard to testing, et cetera. And I'll have Jasmine kind of go into that in a few minutes here. We are now going into phase two because we did go into the orange. And phase two means our pod sizes are bigger, the days of the week are expanded, the numbers of hours per session are expanded. And so it's more sport-related activities and it's been working seamlessly. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jasmine to talk to you about the medical protocols that we've been putting into place. Then I'll turn it over to Tim and to Katie to talk about what this has meant to their student athletes. Then we're gonna punt it over to our colleagues at Skyline and have them kind of, you know, clean up from there. So Jasmine, you want to talk about the medical protocols?
Yes, good evening. Hopefully y'all can hear me. Thank you for, for having me tonight at this meeting. Our protocols that we put in place, I worked since August, since the shutdown at the state level with the forty-four other athletic trainers to get all of our protocols in place throughout the state. So we're all working in unison for the first time. Sorry that it took a pandemic to do so, but there's been some good that has come out of this situation. To date, we have tested and gotten back four hundred and fifty-five negative COVID tests. We have had one positive case, but due to our parameters and our protocols, that student athlete never stepped foot on campus. The student athletes are taking this very serious. They're self-reporting any signs of symptoms. We call them the day before they come on campus. They have to check in an hour before coming on to campus on a mobile app. We see their signs and symptoms. If they do report any signs and symptoms, me or Steven, my other coworker, will call them to check in before they come to campus, assess if, if, if it's allergies or if it's something more serious. If they have more than three of the symptoms, we turn them over to Ray so he can assess if they can come on to campus. And so we don't even allow them to come on campus if we're unsure. Once they do get on campus, they go to security checkpoint, their name's on the smart sheet. So only the approved student athlete and staff members that have, have checked in on the mobile app are allowed onto campus. We take their temperature. And for phase one, they've stayed in pods of ten and now we've expanded to twenty-five now and using other facilities. So the communication and coordination between the student athletes and the staff have, have gone off magnificently. And we've been able to really fight this thing and keep it off campus and keep our incident rate very low with just the one positive case.
Great. Thanks, Jasmine. And also for, for the board members, we do, we do a random draw of twenty-five percent of our student athletes on a weekly basis to go get PCR tested. That's the nasal swab, the COVID test. And that's how we determine the rates of, to ensure that they're, they're allowed to come back on the campus. So without further ado, let me introduce our head football coach, Tim Tullock. And he'll talk to you a little bit about what it's meant to their student athletes.
Yeah, good evening, our guys. We'll talk about them in a second. I guess good late evening. But before we do, just, just from, from my side, I do also want to, want to reiterate Andreas's sentiments for trustee Schwartz and Mandelkeren. I mean, you, everything starts at the top and we do appreciate us in the trenches on the ground floor. You know, we, we, we need that support from the top and you, you guys have always been there. So I just want to say thank you for your genuine care and love for our students for, for all these years. And it's much appreciated. Trustee Schwartz coming into English class and hanging out with us and writing in the end zone. And trustee Mandelkeren, I'll be in the heat of the moment on the sidelines of a game and look up and see you there, supporting our, our guys. And so it, it means a lot. I just want to, want to say thank you. And welcome the, the new trustees, Pimentel and Petritas to join hands with us at the best community college district on the planet. And of course, a shout out to trustee Goodman for, for, you know, you, we, for another term. And we appreciate so much what you've done. So, so thank all the trustees before we go. Us in athletics, it's a little different for us. I mean, there's a hundred and twenty kids on our football team. Most of them are starting with a whole array of life obstacles way before COVID. And they have their own set of challenges that they're working through. And what provides a huge kind of a sanctuary for them is sports and athletics and being part of a team and being part of something bigger than them and being able to lean on each other in times of need. And with, with the COVID and being removed from campus and being removed from each other, that, that, that concept of, of, of team and interdependence and support has been extremely challenging for our guys. And we've had an extraordinary amount of mental health issues. I mean, deep depression and, and loss of will to, to, to move forward. Multiple young men where they're, you know, a complete loss of will to, to move forward. And we as coaches, I mean, we're, we're just trying to, trying to keep them together and hold it together. And we've, we've through Zooms, I mean, there's all this stuff that we're doing. But it's kind of like a comedian that at some point you run out of material and jokes and, and, and find, finding ways to keep them engaged. And, and that's where the return to play, you know, and the return to campus. And, you know, a huge thank you to our administrators, the EOC, Andreas Wolf and Jasmine Gittens for giving us a chance to get them back. Even in the beginning, if it's just getting on the field, completely socially distanced, doing a squat and a plank, right, outdoors. And, and, and that for our guys, I'm first to give flicker of light, flicker of hope. You know, and, and, and for, for much of our guys, it's, it's a purpose. And it's, it's a reason to keep pushing through this. And we've lost a few kids along the way, but for the most part, we've, we've done I think a really good job of keeping them together and just them, with masks, seeing each other's eyes and seeing, you know, I can look a kid in the eyes and just it's like you, you, you miss them. And having them back here has meant, meant the world to us. So going from phase one to phase two and then having the CCCAA board say, hey, blessing a, a spring season for us gives us a chance for a phase three and, and a season of sport. And that's what a lot of our kids, that's what they're here for, right? They're here for sports in their minds. And they don't realize while they're going through this journey wanting to play sports, that we're teaching them everything else about academics and life, right? And they leave here, it's, it's really a human development program that happens to play football. And so, you know, get, getting this, this, this flicker of light and a hope, you know, means a lot to us. We, we, we really are trying to preach resilience. And that bulldog mindset, you know, tough times don't last and tough people do. And teaching them how to, to fight through a lot of this. But the support from the board, the support from the administrators to give our kids a chance to come back in, in a phase three in January and, and a season of sport in February is, is, is huge for us. And, and losing that, I, I know we would take a big, big hit with our kids. We will lose a bunch of them if we don't. So hopefully, some of these lockdowns in, in the red, whatever it may be in our county, in our state, will, a more restricted November, December will provide for a better January and February and we'll get a chance. So, you know, that, the, the, the purpose to keep moving forward is huge for us. So that, that's all I got, just, you know, reporting from the football side. And, and, you know, you know, at the end of whatever, we'll be, we'll be happy to take any questions.
Great. Thanks, Coach Tullock. And, and I can't overemphasize enough the, you know, the constant or, or, you know, our coaches coming to me, this is before we got into phase one, saying, you know, we as trained professionals are no longer engaged in what we were trained to do. We are now becoming healthcare professionals because of the issues that were going on with our student athletes. And our EOC heard it and they did everything that we, that, that they could to get us back. So, you know, it, it is good to see that glimmer of hope in our student athletes. So without further ado, Katie Goldhan is our women's volleyball coach and she's gonna talk to you all a little bit about what she's experiencing from her, from her team.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Andreas. And Tim, I think you gave an excellent depiction of just what these last seven and eight months have been like for student athletes and, and coaches alike. I think one thing to note is, you know, our athletes crave structure. These student athletes, these collegiate student athletes have had their days planned for them to the minute. When you think about, they wake up, they come on campus, they have class, they go to weights, they go to the training room, they go to practice, probably back to the training room, study hall, leave campus, go to work. I mean, their, their day is planned. And so that was taken from them and it's been hard to watch. And we've all had a firsthand account of seeing that, that life and lifestyle crumble. And in full transparency, in our program, we lost five athletes, some returners and some incoming, incoming players that we were building our program on. But luckily, we've been able to build that back. We've, I think partly because we've been able to regain structure within our, our programs. That structure looked different when we were completely remote, doing workouts via Zoom, individual check-ins, grade checks, film, skill work. But really, you don't get that touch point like you do when you're seeing your athletes face to face. So truly, what's been the most successful in my opinion is that human interaction, right? That engagement that we've been able to see in phase one. And we've just started phase two, as Andreas mentioned. And it's really given them purpose. My athlete last week said, you know, Tuesdays, this was when we're in phase one, Tuesdays are what I look forward to every, every day of the week. And that mental health piece is so huge, right? And we're addressing it by just being with them and creating that structure again. So I really want to give a shout out to Jasmine, to the, the team, everyone involved, including you all. Because of just the excellent policy and procedures that we've- Because of of just the excellent excellent policy and procedures that we've put in place that has allowed us to come this far. And everything is so dialed up. And I I think Andreas and Jasmine mentioned that that everyone's in line and they are aligned with this purpose because. That's what is allowing us to to come back. So I'm in a lot of just appreciation to everyone involved in this process. And we'll continue to adhere to protocol, paying attention to the details. So we can continue to give these student athletes what they need. Not only just from this the sport, the athletic side of things, but but purpose and motivation as well. So thank you guys for your time.
Great. Thanks, Coach Katie. Appreciate that. I do want to give a shout out to one of our colleagues who's not on the the line here, but the. The third arm of our district, Matt Lee is the athletic director at Kenyatta College, and he's been instrumental in in getting their program off and running and. The three of us, Joe, Matt and I, working together from our level and then working, having the, like I said, the athletic trainers working together and then all of us collaboratively has been a fantastic team. So. I'm gonna use the football analogy and punt this over to my colleague up north at Skyline, Joe Morello, and let him kind of wrap it up for us.
Thanks, Andreas. I I appreciate it. And I'll try not to fumble the punt. I good evening, everyone. And I just want to start off by saying that this has been a humbling experience for all of us. Related in athletics and dealing with COVID. Katie talked about the structure. And this has been a lesson in flexibility for all of us. And what we've tried to emphasize to our students is acting with discipline. Acting with flexibility, but also acting with grace and understanding for what everyone's going through. Because each individual experiences this pandemic in a different way. And we've really tried to to focus on the student, the individual student. Giving them what they need, whether that's a return to campus, whether that's not returning to campus and spending the time with their family. What they are looking for, whether it's transferring to a four year school or having the opportunity to to work and go to school. And supporting them through every step of the way. And so I'm very fortunate to work with a great cast of coaches. So I'm going to introduce three of them to you tonight and they'll just talk to you briefly, just for a minute or so. About what they're doing with their programs and this return to play with their student athletes. So I'll start off with our baseball coach, Dino Namicos.
Good evening and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight and just a. Big thank you from all our athletes to the board, to the chancellor, to the athletic director, to the presidents, to. All the work that was done to get us to this point. And this is a crucial and like my counterparts at C S M, you know, we have a big rivalry and it's us against them, but we're really one district. And we all work together and Tim and Katie said it perfectly. Everything they're going through, all the athletes are going through at all three colleges. We need to understand that these kids, this is their purpose. Regular student, the student body, they're used to go in the class, having a job. They're handling this well, this remote learning. The athletes are struggling a little bit. We're trying to help them academically with tutors online. With myself tutoring some of the kids. I have a background in academic advising and my kids in particular. You know, they were so happy that we got to go back to practice just to see each other. I had two kids that said, Coach, we were going the wrong way. We needed this. We were going down the wrong road and I think that's helped a lot. The tragedy. Of this is that we lost ten kids, not because of COVID for them, but for their parents. Three of my dads have cancer. The kids have opted out because they don't want their father to get sick. Some live with grandparents. So it go it goes really deep and there's a lot of layers. To this and just from a morale standpoint, getting the kids together. To talk to them instead of having a Zoom meeting, which we're all too used to now. Athletes want the personal touch. Like I'm old school. That's how we did business face to face. We talked and we we helped fix problems. So that's what I feel has helped our program. I have fifty five baseball players in the program currently. I lost ten who will be going to a four year school. We're helping them move on. And not play this year. And I've got forty other guys that are excited and they wanted to say thank you. Because as I sit on the Coaches Association for the State and I'm the executive board, I've talked to my colleagues and other coaches. Our district is doing the best job in giving our athletes a chance to compete. And we can't thank you enough for all of that because there are some schools that are saying that they have protocols, but they're not following them. And we are following them to a T and we are making sure that the health and well being of our student athletes, our staff and our coaches. Especially us old guys who are over fifty eight, you know, you never know. That they're all taken care of. So again, just wanted to thank you for at least giving us that opportunity to compete. And to get our athletes and hopefully we could get our students back on campus when it's safe and to get back to some normality. I'll pass it over to Justin Piragosi, our basketball coach.
Thanks, Dino. And I just want to echo all the thanks, of course, to the board. We understand that this has just been a monumental effort, top to bottom. And we appreciate all the time that has gone into getting our athletes back on campus. We appreciate the time to speak to you tonight. And getting back to campus and getting back to face to face with our players has just been fantastic. And I can tell you that the kids feel safe. They feel safe on campus. They feel safe with us. I feel safe going to campus every day. I feel safe training my players. Because of all the protocols, the job that our athletic directors, presidents, E O C, all the way up has done. We all feel great being back face to face. I can see it in my players. I can feel it in my players. And I guess to put this in perspective, my guys have worked their entire life to get to this exact moment and they feel like it's being taken away from them. And I can tell you. You know, if you want to know what are we doing with our players, where I can tell you, we haven't been talking about our season much for the past eight months. We've been talking about their well being. We've been talking about their focus on what's important. We've been talking about their academics. We've been talking about their mental health. We've been talking about their physical health. Of course, we've had to spend a lot of time on Zoom and we tried everything we could. We had former players come back and talk to them. I had one of my buddies, a former McDonald's All American, he came on and talked to him. We watched motivational videos, motivational interviews. When we hit September, we just started playing games. We played a lot of catchphrase. It was all about happiness and fun. My younger daughter showed her some card tricks. My older daughter taught our team how to do origami. And, you know, we went through the past eight months and we've had a hundred percent retention. And, you know, we're just trying to keep everything in perspective. We want them to be positive about life. And we know they're much more positive when they have the interaction with their teammates and hopefully with their coaches. We're trying to remain in constant touch, but at the same time, not overpressure them. I think we all feel the work from home life of being on a call twenty four hours a day. We do not want to add that to our players' lives. As a teacher and a coach, I don't believe more is better. We're trying to be efficient with their time because they all have responsibilities when they leave campus. They have responsibilities. To their families and they have responsibilities, obviously, to their academics. So we're not trying to add anything more to their plate. Just hold them accountable for the time that we have them and trying to keep them on the right path that's going to keep them happy and keep them positive. We're obviously covering academics. We're talking about transferring and navigating this process of not knowing if there's going to be a season. And what's going to be available for them at the four year level and even engaging in discussions with our sophomores. Parents so that they're informed about everything that's different this year with the process. So again, we're checking in on our players all the time, but giving them some space to deal with everything that's on their plate right now. But it sure is beautiful doing it back in person. So we appreciate this opportunity. Like I said, we have followed every single protocol necessary for us to be unbelievably confident and comfortable every time we walk on campus. And we hope that continues to move forward. So thank you. Next up is going to be Kevin Corselia, our women's soccer coach.
Thanks, Justin. Again. I want to echo everything that all the coaches have been saying and and being the last coach to go, you know, you've everything you've heard from these coaches. Is true and everything you heard from these coaches is how we all feel about our student athletes and we're seeing all of this. In our student athletes, the the mental health issues, you know, the academic issues, we're seeing all these things and and as coaches, and that's kind of what I wanted to. Close it with here is as coaches, we feel a tremendous amount of concern for our student athletes. And, you know, this would have been my twentieth season coaching at Skyline. And back in February and March, when I was out recruiting student athletes to come join our program. I was making these commitments to them, the the commitments to help them with their academic success. And with their athletic success and with their goals and dreams of transferring on. And as, you know, COVID hit and everything changed, you know, the 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 colleges did a tremendous job of pivoting to online learning. Supporting the students in every way they could. And the the coaches tried to do the same thing and we worked really hard to support our student athletes from a distance. But that's not what athletics is. It's not from a distance. And so we, you know, we're very fortunate that we have the leadership that put together our plans and like Justin said, made everything safe. Our athletic trainers at Skyline have gone above and beyond to, you know, put in place protocols. That make us feel safe when we come to campus and and meet with our athletes. And I have student athletes that want to come to Skyline and train outdoors. And if you've been at Skyline, you know, the training outdoors at Skyline can be somewhat of a challenge. So I have athletes that are excited to be there and doing that and, you know, even the indoor sports like basketball, they're training outside right now. But like Justin said, smiles on their faces because we're able to connect again. And again, as coaches. We feel that commitment we made to the student athletes. We made that commitment. We brought them to our campuses. We brought them into our programs. And again. We want to make sure we follow through with that commitment. And so everybody has been focused on doing that. And allowing us to return to campus and be with our student athletes, you know, whether or not we move forward with competition. It's it's vital that we keep this this face to face contact with our with our student athletes in some capacity. And so we will continue as we move into from phase one to phase two, to keep all those protocols in place. And really do the best we can for our student athletes and help, you know, follow through with that commitment we made to them. When we first talked to them about joining our programs, joining our our colleges. And so again, thank you all for for listening tonight and and getting an idea of what we're doing. And I'll I'll toss it back to Joe and he can kind of wrap up for us.
Thanks, Kev. And and I I think you can see, and I I know this is an an old school perspective, but I I believe that the. The key relationship in education is between the student and the teacher. And if that's right, you can do anything. And if that's not right, you're not going to be able to do anything. And I know it's right between our coaches and our students and our staff. And that's what we're striving for every single day. I started off by saying this is humbling and I I wake up in the mornings and and I. I'm always asking myself, is this the right thing? Am I am I looking out for the best interest of everyone? Because I think we all feel that responsibility. I feel it for my coaches. I feel it for my staff. I feel it for the students. They're counting on us to do the right thing and the best thing for them. And we're very fortunate to have the support of everyone in this district to do it. And I'm exceptionally thankful for that. And I'm really thankful for our students. This has not been easy on them. It's another hill for them to climb and another obstacle to overcome. And we've talked with them about staying disciplined, persistent and positive. Allowing them on campus gives them the ability to do that. And so I'll close by saying how thankful I am for this board as well for giving us this opportunity. There's an old saying in leadership, leadership. You build on people's hopes, not their fears. And you've given us all hope. And we're so thankful for that. So we appreciate it. I'll probably be the last person to say this tonight. So trustee Schwartz and trustee Mandel Kern, thank you so much for your service. I don't have a sideline pass for you, but I have the Skyline College mask. If my camera was on, you could see it. And I'll make sure you and all the trustees get one.
Yay, yay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say thank you because you can never have enough masks these days. So I will wear proudly. Thank you.
But I think it's back to me and I want to thank our 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 coaches. I want to take thank Jasmine. I want to thank our athletic directors. Also want to recognize Matt Lee, who who is here and is our newest interim. Dean of Kinesiology at Kenyatta. Thank you, Matt, for being here. I know you are doing an excellent job. And at this point, you know, as I said, we do have a, we do have to give some sort of indication to the coast conference and. We we will continue to work this and, you know, safety is is obviously the very first consideration. We have parameters within our E O C to to really make this decision about whether to compete or not to compete. I think the other thing that we're going to need to have discussions about and update the board on is. If there's increased top costs, one of the things we're worried about is our ability to continue with the testing. Because I believe there's an increased level of testing if we go into competition. But with that, I just wanted to turn it over back to you, President Schwartz, and we're open for questions, comments, concerns. Any, 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 any kind of discussion you want to have.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up to other board members if they have any comments or questions for the report. Boy, it was it was just too good. No questions or comments. I trust you, Mandel Kern.
I I was going to try and let some of my colleagues go first for change for once, but since they don't want to seem to say anything, I'll I'll say something. Just to the athletic directors and deans and to the coaches, thank you so much for this presentation and thank you so much for what you do every day for our students. I mean, I I know you care about winning your games and and you know, that's that's something that matters, that one loss record is is important. But what comes through much more than that is how much you care about our athletes as students and as human beings. And the the empathy and the care that you're showing for them to help them be successful, not just on the athletic field and not just in the classroom, but in life in general. Really comes through in all of your comments and all of your communications. And that's what makes me so proud to be part of this district is that. We have from top to bottom, whether it's on the athletic fields, whether it's in the classrooms, whether it's in our laboratories, in our career technical education. We have this commitment from our staff to care about our students and want to make them successful in life. And so I just want to thank you for that. And I'll just say, I'll put on, I brought my mask out here and you can see. See the logo on here. You know, my my season turned to crap in March like everybody else's and, you know, I didn't get to any of my events this year and it's tough. And I'm tired of doing virtual races instead of real races, but somehow we'll all make this through this together. And I just I thank you all for what you're doing to help our students succeed and realize that. This is clearly very disappointing for them, but you're you're teaching them lessons that they're learning that they will take with them for the rest of their life. On how to deal with adversity and how to pick up and move forward. And they're for just being associated with all of you. They're going to be so much better off as human beings for this. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Other board members, trustee Norris.
I also echo echo what trustee Mandel Kern said and. And I understand exactly what you're feeling. Athletics is, it's not just here at the college, but it's something that. People have and and kids grow up with from when they're little. You know, from what the third grade going through their T ball and all the ways up through junior high school and then through high school. And then you get to college and then when you're done with college, wherever you're going to go, you still have the memories and. The the lessons that you've learned through participating on a team cooperatively, sportsmanship. And and the the going the extra mile as a member of a team. And and the way that you look at your coaches, because. because it's a different thing unless you haven't, if you haven't been involved in it, maybe you don't exactly get it. But it is a special place for people that participated in athletics. And I can see how this having been taken away has hurt even more. And so I commend you for doing all the things that you've done to take care of those people and those students, those young men and women that that look up to you and that are in your charge and keeping them together and keeping them as unified as you can, because we all know this is going to go away. But, but we got to just make sure that we all stay together until it's gone. And then continue to do the good things and learn the good lessons of lives that we do learn through sports. And, you know, athletics plays a big role in, in not just for the athletes, but for the, for the schools, you know, I mean, I've always, I've always believed that when you have a school and it has an athletic program, and the student body can get behind it, it gives us a sense of pride and commitment, not just for those that are playing, but for all who are associated with us students, and obviously us as members of the board and people in the district and our whole community at large. So, thank you. Keep doing what you're doing, whatever we can do to help you know that we will be there for you. Just let us know and we will respond.
Thank you, trustee Nurse. Other board members? I heard that Jeremy Wallace wanted to make a comment.
I do. Thank you. I wanted to just, you know, reiterate what trustees Mandelkern and Nurse have said, that our coaches are doing a phenomenal job at supporting our student athletes. I have several athletes in my classes and a lot of my colleagues in my English department have athletes in their classes. We know, we know firsthand what the coaches are doing to support the athletes. But I think as the representative of the faculty and of the body that oversees the academic mission of the district, I think I would be remiss not to point out that we're allowing our student athletes on campus to practice, but we're not allowing them on campus to support them academically. Our student athletes are struggling academically. I can tell you that from firsthand experience. And if the coaches are not going to ask, I'm going to ask for them. I think we need to find a way to allow our student athletes to do study hall on campus when they're with their coaches and with each other, right? And I know we can do this. We have like huge spaces at the gym. We can do it outdoors. We have computer labs. We've been created enough, creative enough to get our student athletes on campus. We can be creative enough to support them academically while they're on campus. And then, you know, because, you know, we ask ourselves, what kind of district are we if we're going to allow our student athletes on campus and risk their health in order to practice and not support them academically while they're on campus? And then the last thing I'd like to say is that, you know, I'd also be derelict in my duty as academic senate president to, if I did not mention that we have many faculty and hard to convert disciplines that also want to use the campus for their courses. And that, you know, if we have all these great processes, why are we not using them also to get our performance faculty on campus with their students, our music faculty on campus with their students, you know, some of our STEM, STEM labs have been, or STEM classes that have been put online, right? So I just want to kind of throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from board members? You know, what went through my mind on your presentation to all the coaches and the athletic staff is, and I know this is true with faculty, all faculty, but the students are so lucky to have somebody that they can go to and feel reassured and kind of change their scenery and do something different and for themselves. And so I certainly do appreciate everything I've heard tonight in behalf of those students. And Jeremy, good, good questions brought out. I hope that you get some answers soon or some kind of more discussion, because it does, I'm all, I'm all for everything, but the arts is one thing that I kind of lean toward. And I think we, you know, students need the arts as much as everybody needs it as a balance. So I would hope that that message gets through, that there's a lot of, a lot of students that should benefit as much as the athletes do. I totally agree. Chancellor Claire?
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, we don't have to have a long discussion now. But Jeremy, I appreciate the comment. And certainly, we feel the same way. It's so, this is so difficult to do this work. And I've actually directed or the policy group myself and presidents have directed the EOC to really develop a comprehensive phased plan to get back on our campuses as quickly as we can. And I think the study halls is actually one of the first things we want to be able to do, because we think we can do that safely. The other comment I would make in terms of the athletics, and again, you know, don't want to spend time here, but Jazz could tell you that a lot of the work in terms of keeping the athletics safe, it's self-contained and it's done as a result of the work of our athletic trainers. And that's why they're able to kind of, you know, they're able to respond a little bit easier because they, they, it's self-contained. But I'm with you. And I recognize that, you know, the more, the more we can get back on our campuses, the sooner, the better. It's a matter of balancing that with our capacity to keep things safe. And that's, that's always going to be front of mind. So appreciate the comment, though.
Very good. Okay, I think we're moving through. We are now at communications. And I don't have anything in front of me. Does anybody want to tell me about communications? Have I missed anything? I guess not.
You have a hand raised under the attendees, I think, from the last topic still.
A hand raised?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, sorry. Whoever it is, go ahead.
Yes. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I give credit where its credits do. Our health and wellness department has been crucial with the mental health needs of our student athletes. So the cases that Tim was referring to, Emily and Makiko and Gil have shown a big time for us. They have come into Zoom meetings with the student athletes and their peer-to-peer educator group has put on an amazing presentation for suicide and suicide prevention, and really opened up that conversation for our student athletes. And they met with each and every team while we were away in quarantine, and also continues to work with each team as needed. So I definitely wanted to make sure that they got some credit with just helping us get through this, this hard time.
Very good. Thank you, Jasmine.
Thank you.
Okay, no more hands raised. And I think the questions and answers have been dealt with and the chats.
The treaties, I think, had some.
I think, Chancellor Claire, I think you took care of that one, didn't you? With trustee-elect Lisa Petries. Okay, we're all up to date on that. But thank you, trustee Mandelkern. Now, back to communications. I don't think there's anything. So we are at statements from board members. And I always want to start with Jade, because she's so far away in the Bahamas, and I envy her for that. And how's it been going?
Hi. I just want to say thank you to President Schwartz and trustee Mandelkern for your service to our district. And I'm wishing you all the best in your future endeavors. And I'm looking forward to the associated students' presentation next month.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much, Jade. Other board members, comments? Jurorice? No. Holliver? No. Maurice? Oh, trustee Holliver?
A couple of comments first. Congratulations to the newly elected and re-elected trustees and Godspeed to our trustees who served for so many years and onward to future endeavors and perhaps a little more free time to on a Wednesday evening, which I'm sure you'll find things to occupy that time. But enjoyed serving with you and wish you the best. I had just a couple of comments that regarding a couple of process things. One, when I went to look at a past board meeting, I found it very, very cumbersome to use, you know, kind of find it through the Zoom link. The way it was, it was impossible to download, just to kind of make a, make it brief. And I may not have the fastest download speeds in the world, but, you know, I was getting a message like 55 minutes to download. And I made it through maybe 20 minutes before I got disconnected. So I'm hoping we can post all those meetings, you know, more the way other, many other government agencies do, which is to just whether it's through a YouTube or a video function on, on the website, just to be able to say, okay, I want to, I want to watch the, the board, you know, meeting of such and such date without having this cumbersome process. I think it's more user-friendly. And then the other question I had, I guess through the chair for our chancellor and staff, we, I think we're pretty far behind in approving minutes of board meetings. And I want to bring that concern up that we really need to catch up quickly on minutes. So those are my comments.
Okay. Any other board members? Only two. Trustee Goodman?
Yes, I'd help if I take myself off mute. I'd like to just congratulate our incoming trustees. I'd like to also give them kudos. And thank you to both trustee Mandelkern and President Schwartz. Thank you for your service. Dave, I appreciate all you've done and encouraging me to be a part of this board initially, as well as Karen, knowing you as a student, being on my diploma, another, yet another person that's on my diploma, you're on my college diploma, Tom Nurse is on my high school diploma. But, you know, it was great to continue that, that relationship from a student to a colleague, especially when I was at South San Francisco, when I got that message from President Stan Backstrout saying, hey, you need to talk to Karen. And you got to work on getting middle college up there in South City. I appreciate that, that effort. And just all you've done for, both of you have done for education in San Mateo County students. And I look forward to work with our two new trustees and moving our district forward. Also, I guess lastly, it wouldn't be end of a meeting if I didn't mention that yet again, the agenda item that I intentionally wanted to have on our agenda, race, class, gender, and equity on our agendas, yet again, was, was not on the agenda. I can't help but think that it was, you know, either intentional or just, you know, an oversight. But November is Native American Heritage Month. And much like the months before, these are opportunities for us to not just educate ourselves, but also to highlight populations of our students so that they can feel a part of our community and understand that their existence on our campuses is important to us. November is Native American Heritage Month, or as it is commonly referred to, American Indian and Alaska Native Heritage Month. The month is a time to celebrate rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories, and to acknowledge the important contributions native, the native people. Heritage Month is also an opportunity to educate the general public about tribes, to raise general awareness about the unique challenges native people have faced both historically and in the present, and the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer these challenges. Also, I'm sure we all can take this as an opportunity to Google and learn more about the land that we stand. We are on a lonely land here in San Mateo County on our campuses. And it's hollow land. And we should understand that. But we also, for those who, you know, have voted this past few weeks, know the significance of, in the importance, the Native Americans played in this past election. If you haven't, I'm not going to spend the time now to tell you, but Google it and understand that the, that Native Americans had a significant important and feel valued in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nurse?
Let me also express my appreciation to both you Karen and to Dave for your service. I've spoken personally to both of you and expressed my, my appreciation for your work here and as being a colleague on the board and, and how I've really enjoyed working with both of you. And congrats, Maurice, also on his reelection. We have a lot of work to do. And I, and I, and I also extend my congratulations to our new two trustees who will be coming on board to deal with the, the issues of education in our community college district and basically to move forward in the positive direction that has been going for several years. I mean, we deal with a lot of issues here, but so many of them are so positive. They outweigh the negative things that come up from time to time. And we deal with all of them. And I think that that shows that we are a healthy district, but we're not there yet. We got a long way to go. But I think we see a direction and, and basically know where we want to go. And Karen and Dave, you have been at the front of it for so many years, leading the way. And you will be missed. But we also appreciate your service and wish you the very best going forward.
Thank you. Trustee Mandelkern?
Okay, does anybody know what TV shows are on on Wednesday night? Thank you, President Schwartz. I want to do a couple of quick updates. So one is, I have been participating along with trustee Goodman and President Claire in the trustee fellowship workshops that have been sponsored by the Aspen Institute, the Foundation for California Community Colleges, and the state chancellor's office. And we had our fall workshop session on November 2. And then there was an intercession meeting on November 9, which I was able to attend. And I just want to report back briefly, and I've given Chancellor Claire a more detailed email update on this. The two key takeaways from the fall workshop were about adopting leading indicators as opposed to trailing indicators of student success. You know, we tend to focus on some of those trailing indicators like graduation rates, completion of certificates, transfer rates and so forth that happen at the end of the process. We don't do as much perhaps as we should be at focusing on some of the leading edge indicators to see how our students are doing. For example, when they enroll, do they complete their first transfer level class in the first semester, things like that? And what is the retention semester to semester? Trying to get a handle earlier on how we're doing. And also disaggregating those indicators so that we can look at the equity gaps that we have and see if we are making progress, of course, closing those equity gaps early in the process rather than looking retrospectively at the completion data. The second main takeaway was on revising the chancellor evaluation process, which I know we as a board have discussed several times, but have not taken much action on actually doing. But basically revising the chancellor evaluation to better reflect our strategic goals, particularly around student success and closing equity gaps and creating student equity. So I think that's something that the board going forward may well want to take a look at. There's also an opportunity that was pointed out during the intercession workshop to get some consulting help provided by the Aspen Institute to this board, for the entire board to learn how to work on together on some of these issues. And there's also an opportunity to apply for funding of up to $50,005,000 to implement a project at our district, such as a revised chancellor evaluation process that I think may be of interest to this board to pursue going forward. So I would encourage you to look at that. I would also suggest that there needs to be a new trustee named to participate in this process going forward. There is still more sessions to be had in the spring of 2021, which obviously I will not be participating in. But hopefully, trustee Goodman and Chancellor Claire and another trustee will be able to continue participating in that process. We are going to adjourn in the memory of our colleague, Tom Moore. And I just want to say a few words in tribute to Tom tonight as well. Tom was an educator's educator. And I think we are all aware of his outstanding career as a high school teacher, a principal and district superintendent in San Mateo Union High School District. And of course, act two of his career was how most of And of course, act two of his career was how most of us got to work very closely with Tom, first as the interim president and then as the permanent president at Kenyatta College, and then as a trustee on this district board for four years. And Tom really exemplified our students' first core values and, and worked tirelessly to ensure the success of all students. And he was the driving force behind the creation of this district's first formal strategic plan, which has been, I think, a very good thing for moving this district forward and indeed puts our students first. And even after he left this board, Tom continued to care deeply about our students right up to the end of his life. You know, as I think many of you know, he was a voracious reader and communicator, particularly on the topic of education. And as recently as the weekend before his passing, November, October 31st and November 1st, I was emailing back and forth with Tom about the latest statistics he had read and shared with me regarding homelessness and community college students. And I shared with him, you know, what we at the district were doing, continuing to address this issue and trying to do it and bringing him up to speed on that. You know, education was Tom's life and his passion, and his contributions to this district and to this county will be hard to replace, if at all replaceable, and he will be very sorely missed. So I just wanted to say those few words in Tom's memory as well before we adjourned this evening. And I just want to say a few words for the last time, since you've, you've all heard me speak at length over the past 17 years. And for the last time, I'm going to take up a few more minutes of your time here. It's been a terrific honor in my life to be able to serve as an elected trustee of the San Mateo County Community College District over the past 17 years. I thank you all for the kind words that you said over the past few weeks and during the course of this meeting, and particularly to Assembly Members Mullen and Supervisor Pine for joining us and their kind words earlier this evening. I'd like to think that I've left the district in a better place than it was when I started here in December of 2003. I congratulate our trustees-elect Lisa Patritis and John Pimentel. And I, I wish you well in your service on the, on this board. And I hope you both find this as fulfilling an experience as I have, and that you'll also be able to make your own contributions to the success of this district over time. And just for one last time, you're going to get to hear me repeat some of the messages that I've tried to reinforce and affirm over four terms of service on this board. One is that I'm very proud that we have a district strategic plan. And again, thanks to trustee Moore for his leadership in this that is focused on our students, their success, and social justice. I believe that we have continued to increase student success over the past 17 years that I've been on this board, that we have closed our equity gap, gaps, both gender and in terms of ethnicity. But there is still more work to be done to achieve equality. I'm encouraged by the programs that we've put in place to increase our students' success over the 17 years. I hope we will continue to improve upon them, such as our Promise Scholars Program, Guided Pathways, our learning communities like Habba Bayan, Puente, Mana, Writing in the End Zone, you know, our Math Jams, our award-winning STEM programs, our honors communities and programs, the work we've done to reduce and remove barriers to success, you know, doing away with the placement exam process, making sure that our graduation requirements were the same across all three colleges, increasing our course articulation across the three campuses, so students have a more seamless path to their educational goals, improving our work with our high school partners and increasing dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment, having the middle college program at all three of our campuses. I think from our last great crisis that we went through in 2009 to 2010 in the financial meltdown, the Great Recession, we learned that students are actually quite smart about knowing which courses are relevant and which ones are not. And I hope we keep that in mind, that students tend to vote with their feet, and they recognize well before we do which programs are no longer relevant to help them meet their educational goals and which programs must be either revamped or shut down. And that we will realize that, you know, there, there's no such thing as a bad crisis. There's always an opportunity coming out of the crisis, much as we did in 2009 and 2010. We revamped a lot of programs and we shut down some programs like blacksmithing, which met its demise and probably well past time. Other programs over the years, we've looked at things like broadcasting and took it out of the age of vacuum tubes and turned it into a digital media program that's now relevant for the current world. And I hope we'll continue to have that policy. And while we're going through a great crisis now in COVID-19, that we will actually get some positives out of that as well, that will help us strengthen this institution. And we've successfully navigated the implementation of online learning, not perfectly, but certainly to a degree that I think none of us would have thought possible last March 1st. You know, it's been critical in responding to COVID-19, but I think we also need to keep in mind the support that we need to provide to our students that can't be provided online. Our discussion of athletics that we just had should be a template for all of our students. As Academic Senate President Wallace pointed out, we should find a way to provide this kind of level of student support on our campuses to all of our students, not just to our student athletes, including providing that personal support that really can't be done online, the tutoring, the health services, the study halls and all of that. I really hope that we can continue to find ways to provide more of that support on campus for our students just as soon as we possibly can. I'm also very proud of the work that we've done outside of the classroom to contribute to our student success, including the creation of our Dream Centers, our Veterans Resource Centers, the Spark Point Centers, the work we've done to provide food assistance and subsidies for our students, transportation assistance and the shuttle programs, the Skyline College in Kenyatta that we've implemented, the limited work that we've done so far on housing for our students on, on an emergency basis. I think personally, we've not done enough, but I'm sure there is more to come going forward. I believe we've increased the safety on our campuses for our students, our employees, and our community, both with our, our completely revamped public safety team, creating greater sensitivity to the environment that we create for our students, using technologies such as our enhanced electronic locks and our cameras, improving our communications infrastructure for our public safety officers. And for my, my personal issue that you've heard me drone on about so often in the past, of making sure that we actually have door locks on our classrooms in the event of any kind of active shooter or violence on campus events, that we can do. One of the things that's actually been shown to increase the safety of our students and the safety on our campuses. I'm pleased that we've been able to do that. I thank in part also the generosity of our San Mateo County voters and taxpayers who have put almost a billion dollars into upgrading our campuses to create a 21st century learning environment. When I first got engaged with this district up at Skyline College on the President's Council, I remember when we had graffiti on the walls there and, and students would literally run back to their cars after class to get off of campus as quickly as possible. And now when I look at the facilities that we have on all three of our campuses, the new buildings and the upgraded and renovated buildings and the care that we take with our greens, our custodial services and our greenskeepers and the lawns and the gardens that we have, that we draw students in and they spend their entire day on campus. You know, we are literally creating an oasis that they can feel safe in to pursue their studies. I'm unapologetic about having provided first-class facilities for first-class learning for our first-class students. And I firmly believe that our students recognize the priority we place on their education by making this investment and how we spend our tax dollars. And then they learn up to those high expectations that we have set for them. I think that I'm leaving the district in a strong fiscal position. We've successfully transitioned from being a revenue limit district to being community-supported. We've made it through the Great Recession and hopefully we're going to navigate successfully the severe economic impacts of COVID-19. We have substantial budget reserves and a trust fund that now covers 100% of the post-employment benefit liabilities that we have. And I think we also have a much better understanding of our investments. So hopefully we don't have a repeat of the loss that we incurred in 2008 due to the Lehman Brothers bankruptcy, and that will continue to keep a very sharp eye on our investments to prevent any further losses from ever occurring again. And we've achieved fiscal success by working together, by treating our employees and our community with fairness, with equity and dignity as one team, as we like to say, on the facility side of the house. And when it comes to compensation and benefits, we haven't contracted out program or worked with vendors who employ low-wage workers. I think we proudly provided good wages and good benefits to all of our employees. We've implemented project labor agreements that cover the construction work done on our campuses in order to both ensure better quality work and great work and great buildings have been created on our campus, but also to invest our taxpayer dollars back in our local community where it goes directly to the benefit of San Mateo County. Our board has increased its transparency and accessibility. From day one, I've championed that we should broadcast our stream, our board meetings. It only took a global pandemic to achieve this, but I sincerely hope that in the future the board will continue to make its meetings accessible online, even after we go back to meeting face to face. And that, as trustee Holliver just pointed out, the archives and the videos of these meetings will be made even more easily and readily accessible to the public. I do want to thank my colleagues on the board who I've had the pleasure of serving with over the years. And I think it's very telling that this is a very short list, that, that members of this board tend to serve for a long period of time. And I think that's actually in general, a very good thing for this district. So, and start with three of our departed members, the late Tom Constantino, whose advice and counsel was critical to me as I came up to speed quickly as his successor, but never his replacement on this board, to the late Helen Hausmann, who set an example of a standard of unity of board members working together across vastly different politics and ideologies, and always emphasized that as long as we all kept our focus on our student success, we're going to achieve great things together. The late Tom Moore, as I've said previously, who is an educator's educator, who was a pleasure to work with as both an administrator and a trustee on this board, to Patricia Milianich, who both on and off this board championed the cause of our most vulnerable and at-risk students. President Karen Schwartz, I've often lamented that I'd never known what it was like to serve on this board without your leadership, and now I'll never have to know that. Trustee Richard Holliver, thank you for your friendship and guidance for many years, going back to 1996, I believe, 1995, well before I joined this board. And thank you for setting the example for all of us on how a trustee should exercise independent judgment for the benefit of all of our stakeholders in this community. Trustee Tom Nurse, it's been a pleasure serving with you over the past two years and getting to know you. You've been a great and supportive colleague, and I wish you well for the remainder of your time of service on this board. Over five elections for seated on this board, I've run against something like 18 to 20 opponents. And I think as some of you recall, some of them were, shall we say, very interesting people, like the gentleman who wanted to shut down all of our classrooms and turn our campuses into golf courses. Luckily, he was not elected to this board. Of all these opponents, there's really only one that I would have ever felt okay losing an election to, and that's trustee Maurice Goodman. And many of you may not recall that trustee Goodman actually ran for this board against trustee Schwartz and myself unsuccessfully many years ago. And then I encouraged him to run again in 2015, which he did successfully. Although I will point out Maurice, that I did receive more votes than you did in that election. So the score is still two to one in my favor. But you have been a great trustee during your first term on this board over the past five years. I have no doubt that you will continue to serve this district well. As I said throughout this campaign, it pained me to have to run against you because I felt that you brought a compelling set of qualities to the table that would be very unfortunate for this district to lose. And apparently, a majority of the voters in trustee Area 3 agreed with me on that point. And I think as you, you are a graduate of this district, you are a former student body president and student trustee, you're a resident of the historically underrepresented northern part of San Mateo County on this board, you're a former K through 12 school board member who brings that expertise, and you also have deep ties to our fellow school board members throughout San Mateo County. You've devoted your life's work to serving youth in need in this area. You're the spouse of a district employee, you're the parent of students in our district. And incidentally, you are a person of color, but you're not defined by that. You are so much more, you bring a unique perspective and point of view to this board, and I'm glad that our community will continue to benefit from it. So congratulations on your success in this election, and I wish you many more years of service on this board with great distinction. Finally, our North Star is doing what is best for the students that we serve. When we keep that in mind as our guiding principle, we've done pretty darn well as a board and as a district. And I hope all of you, whether you're on the board, whether you're in our community, whether you're on our faculty or staff, that you will continue to keep that in mind as you move forward without me. And by focusing on what we need to do to make all of our students successful, the San Mateo County Community College District, already a very good district, will become an even better district in the future. So thank you for the opportunity to service, to be of service. Good luck in the future and good night to all of you. Thank you.
Now you have to do it again when we meet next week.
I don't even know how to follow that, Dave. I don't know if it's because you just came down from your election that you had all those, all the things that have been accomplished at your fingertips or what, but I, you really brought my memory back to a lot of things that I've kind of taken for granted and have forgotten. So thank you, thank you for that. Before I get into my short presentation of goodbye, I just wanted to tell you as board president, I had the, the opportunity and the honor to appear, to learn something new. It was this old trick, you can, you can always teach an old dog new tricks. The international program, did an MOU signing with two high schools in Thailand. And first of all, I had to download a program that I'd never heard of before, but I was walked through by our own staff and, and did it. But what an interesting opportunity that was to see the people in Thailand. We had, we had a rehearsal, which was pretty good. But to see them the next night in their finest attire and very professional as they signed the, with Jing Nguyen's help, he signed the MOUs. And we got to see the people in Thailand at the same time. I think it was morning there for them and evening for us, if I remember correctly. But it was, it was really a nice experience and something that I hadn't done, will never do again, but I'll always remember. So thank you, Jing, for having that opportunity for us and congratulations to the international program. I'm just going to say a few words and I'm going to start off by welcoming John and Lisa to this board. I wish you well. You have, both of you have sat down on meetings for many, many months. And so I think that you have an understanding of what goes, what happens. But it'll take, I will tell you from my worldly advice, that it takes a while to really understand and to comprehend everything. Don't expect to learn everything really quickly, but just listen. And I remember mothering Maurice when he came on by saying, just be yourself. That's the most important thing. Think for yourself, speak for yourself, and you will be successful. So Maurice, you're back and I congratulate you. Dave, I'm, you know, one of you had, had, it was a winner and a loser, but both of you are really winners. Your service, Dave, through this district for 17 years is exceptional and it's what was expected because the district comes first, no matter what with you. It always come, it always shines through, and I've always appreciated that. I'm just going to say a few words about myself, and I'll start off by telling you that I certainly didn't plan to be here this long. 25 years, I didn't plan to stay here this long, and I'm surprised that, that it went so quickly. But I look at myself and I say, gee, I don't think I've really changed, but I'm sure that some of the people out there think I have. I've always tried to stay within myself, and my attitude's always been what you see is what you get. So I try to be very, being very honest about everything. Someone that I admire very much described my style as I learn from the ground level so that I can lead from the top. And when he said that to me, I said, that's exactly what I've been trying to do. I have so enjoyed going to programs and events at the colleges and learning about what was going on, going to academic senate meetings and just sitting in the background and listening to all the teachers talk about what they're, what's coming up and the problems that they're, they're trying to solve in such a positive way. I, it's just been a really good learning experiment. I, as I said, Dave really mentioned so many things that I kind of forgot that we've, that we've gone through together. But when I started to look at my 25 years and I said, I haven't changed, but what really has changed are the facilities, there's no doubt about it. And it was an exciting time for me to help pass those bond measures to fund those improvements. I truly feel the majority of the community who funded these improvements are also proud of how their taxpayer money has been spent. I've heard over and over, if they hadn't been up here, the campuses for a few years, they go, why weren't they like this when I was here? Even though the looks might be different, the quality of education has always been high, rated very high. This district has the best faculty, staff, and administration by far anywhere. Students who come here are smarter than most because they have picked the best education institution in this area. It's been an honor to represent all of you in San Mateo County. It's been an honor to represent all of you in San Mateo County. I've made friends that I know will be with me for the rest of my life. My style has been to get to know who is providing the programs by visiting. And I have to say, I really missed the person to person that we can't go on campuses because that's how I educated myself all these years about what was happening in the programs and what, what we were doing so successfully. I love going to the events and educating myself, and I hope for all of you that we can get back to that soon because that is an experience that, and the best way to learn about these great, this great district. I just, I just sat through the video that CSM made to thank their classified staff, and I, I compliment you at CSM for doing that. And I would suggest if you haven't looked at it, please do. And board, why don't you do the same thing, but do it to all the staff in this district? I thought it was very personable and very well-meaning, and I, you just can't say, thank you. You're doing a good job enough as far as I'm concerned. I'm going to end, kind of getting closer to the end, but I'm going to make a statement that might shock a few. And what I'm going to say is, I'm not ashamed to give credit to Chancellor Emeritus Ron Galacholo. His vision has brought to the district many programs that have helped during, bring on more finances in such a creative way. The team that he's put together continues to move this district forward. I believe in learning from the past, but don't get stuck there. I admit, I'm ready to move on, and I want all of you to continue to do great things. I'll be out there watching you and there, and be there for you if you ever need more of my assistance. In the meantime, keep well, be safe, and please keep your sense of humor. I've enjoyed the 25 years and I will hopefully see you again soon. I can't promise that I will be back at another meeting because I was not planning to do that. So we will see where this takes us. That ends my remarks. We are down. We do not have to go back to closed session. Let's see, and we are going to adjourn in the memory of our colleague and friend, Tom Moore. I will say personally, and I've said this a few times, I had the privilege of meeting Tom Moore when he was a principal or maybe even a teacher, but he was up at Westmore High School in the Jefferson High School District. And I was the activist trying to keep the streets clean in Daly City. There was a complaint that the students were going off campus and making a mess. And so, you know, we thought, well, we just had to go over there and shut that campus down. And Tom said, no, 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 you're going to go out there and they're going to clean it up. And I said, that's even a better idea because they really buy into the situation. That was so many years ago, and I never dreamt that I would end up sitting with him on a board years later. So what a privilege it has been to have him in my, in my life for such a short time. So in his memory, we will now adjourn the meeting. And I don't know when we will meet again, but as I said before, keep well, keep safe, and don't lose your sense of humor. Thank you. Good night.
Brian, we can stop the recording and end the meeting now.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Domin.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.